I don't think so. Oh, there we go, all right. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here this afternoon for our Leon County Commission meeting. We are at 3 o'clock, so we're going to get started. We're going to start out with our invocation by Zach Meredith. Zach, would you come on up to the podium for us? Zach Meredith is the Groups Director, Small Groups Director, at City Church, and also Guest Relations and stuff like that, member of the ministry. And before he was a member of the ministry, Zach worked as a high school coach and teacher at Godbe High School. But before he worked at Godbe High School as a coach and teacher, he was an intern in Brian Welch's classroom in 2014. And I tell people all the time, Zach was the best intern to ever walk the halls at Charles High School, but he was called to the ministry. And so he has taken his talents to the next level. But we are glad you're here, Zach, and please lead us in our opening prayer.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me. Let's all pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve our community. And as we gather today to discuss and decide matters that affect the lives of our neighborhoods, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom, God. Please grant us clarity in our discussion and compassion, in our decisions, and humility in our leadership. May we seek to not only do what is good for today, but what is just and sustainable for generations to come here in Tallahassee. God, please bless each Commissioner, every staff member, all those present here with the Spirit of unity. Remind us of our shared purpose, to serve our community with integrity, to protect the vulnerable, and to uphold the common good. We ask for peace in our county, prosperity for our communities, and I pray that you would have your hand over those in charge. Please guide them and give them wisdom and discernment in the face of decision-making. And we thank you for who you are and all the blessings that you have and continue to give us. So God, please be with us here this afternoon. It's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Zach. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go into our awards and proclamations. I don't see Commissioner Maddox here yet, so we're going to go to Commissioner O'Keefe. You are recognized to give a proclamation for June 2025 as Pride Month.
Okay. I'm honored to present this proclamation, and honored to have so many people here who do so much to advocate for our LGBTQ+ members of our community. Proclamation reads, whereas the month of June marks the anniversary of the Stonewall uprising of 1969, a turning point in the movement toward LGBTQ+ equality, justice, and visibility in the United States and around the world, led in part by Black and Brown LGBTQ+ individuals, including transgender women of color and, whereas Leon County has a strong record of advancing equity, having adopted protections against discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression in its Human Rights Ordinance of 2011, and having established a domestic partnership registry in 2013 to promote dignity and equal treatment for all families, and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to recognize the history, resilience, and many contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other LGBTQ+ individuals to the cultural, economic, and civic life of Leon County and beyond. And whereas Leon County is committed to promoting equity, inclusion, and respect for all residents regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and the values and values the diversity that strengthens our community, and whereas Leon County Board of County Commissioners acknowledges the ongoing challenges faced by the LGBTQ+ community, including discrimination and barriers to opportunity, and reaffirms its commitment to fostering a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment for all. And whereas by celebrating Pride Month, we have lipped the voices of LGBTQ+ individuals, honor their experiences, and continue the important work of advocating for equal rights and dignity for all. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the month of June 2025 be known as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and encourages all residents, organizations, and institutions to reflect on the importance of equity and inclusion, and to stand in solidarity with our LGBTQ+ neighbors, family members, coworkers, and friends. Dated this first day of June 2025, signed by the Chairman, all the County Commissioners, and County Administrator Vince Long.
Hello, I just want to say thank you to the Commission and Commissioner O'Keefe for this proclamation, and I want to thank the county for standing with us when not everybody is, so thank you.
I just wanted to jump in and introduce this team of folks, because this is some of the top-tier folks fighting for LGBTQ civil rights in the state of Florida, and I'm really proud that we're here in Leon County. I'm Lauren Kelly Manders, I'm a native Tallahasian. I work as the Grants Manager for Equality Florida. I also am the immediate past Chair of Tallahassee Pride. We had a record-breaking Pride celebration in Cascades Park this year, and I saw some of you out there, really appreciated that. And just truly, John Harris Mauer is our Public Policy Director for Equality Florida, has made a huge difference in the Capitol across the street. Dana Farmer is a member of Tallahassee and Board Member of Equality Florida, also on Tallahassee Pride. It's a small group of us that are doing a lot of work to hold the line in Florida and just to be grateful honestly that we're in Leon County and that you're so accepting and so, it shouldn't be radical to acknowledge that everyone's equal, but Leon County and the city of Tallahassee have not backed down on that front, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to say real quickly, just, you know, Leon County has a long history of standing with the LGBTQ+ community, and we're proud to continue to do that this year. Thank you very much for being here.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to present a proclamation now in recognition of CarePoint's 40th Anniversary, or Big Ben Cares, rather. So I'm joined by a crew, all right. Let's go, how are you? Good to see you guys, all right. All right, everybody, all right, let's go, rock and roll. Come on in, come on in. Don't worry, we won't be here too very long. All right, it is my privilege to present this proclamation to Big Ben Cares. We are all very familiar with the organization and all the work you do, and are grateful for your presence in our community. And thank you all for coming out here on this potentially rainy afternoon, and thank you for 40 years of hard work and service to our community. So whereas on August 18, 1990, the United States enacted the Ryan White Comprehensive AIDS Resource Emergency or CARE Act, providing critical funding for medical care, medications, and supportive services to communities disproportionately affected by the HIV epidemic, and whereas since the HIV/AIDS epidemic began in 1981, our nation has made enormous strides toward preventing, diagnosing, and treating HIV, yet more than 1 million Americans and over 1,400 Leon County residents still live with HIV. And whereas in 1985, a small group of concerned Tallahassee citizens founded Tallahassee AIDS Supportive Services, now known as Big Ben Cares, rooted in the conviction that we are our brothers and sisters-keepers, pledging to care for, support, and advocate for neighbors living with HIV and AIDS. And whereas over the past four decades, Big Ben Cares has become a beacon of hope, compassion, and advocacy, notably opening CarePoint Health and Wellness in 2017 as a comprehensive one-stop offering, primary care, radiology, dental, pharmacy, and laboratory services to clients and the broader community. And whereas since the enactment of the Ryan White CARE Act 35 years ago, organizations such as Big Ben Cares have been indispensable in expanding access to HIV care and treatment, and in achieving high rates of viral suppression among people living with HIV in Leon County. And whereas despite challenges, the collective efforts of Big Ben Cares, advocates, and other service providers have brought us closer than ever to ending the epidemic. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the Board proudly celebrates the 40th anniversary of Big Ben Cares and expresses its deepest gratitude for four decades of compassionate service and leadership in advancing community health. Dated this day, this 10th day of June 2025, and signed by myself and all the Commissioners, and of course attested to by our wonderful County Administrator. Thank you all so much, let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioners. My favorite thing, it's been an honor to be the CEO for the last 20 years. So it is really a testament to the staff and the Board of Directors that we've been able to do this for so long. It's especially hard, as Pride discussed, it's not the greatest atmosphere right now for us, but the staff comes to work every day doing a very difficult job, and we could not do it without the staff that we have. So thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to crowd in here.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman? Ma'am Attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner O'Keefe would like to say a few words to you guys.
I just wanted to thank you, especially all the staff and Rob. I'm very appreciative of all the work that you do. I remember it was my first or second Commission meeting, we were going to vote on approving a needle exchange program. And that's when I first heard from him, wanted to make sure I was going to support it, and I was happy to, and like everything else you've done has been very successful in helping our community. And I appreciate your work and all your team's work.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Anybody, Commissioner, anybody else? Okay.
All right, Commissioners, we're going to wait just a second. Well, we're going to move on to consent, and then we'll come back to awards and proclamations when Commissioner Maddox gets here, okay? If that's okay with you guys. All right, thank you so much. Okay, we are going to go now to citizens to be heard on consent and non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, do we have any speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe we have any speakers under this section of the agenda.
All right, Commissioners, we're on the consent agenda. We've got, it looks like one item was removed and one item was pulled, so would we like to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move consent on the remaining items.
Awesome, we've got a motion for-
A second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. We've got a motion from Commissioner Minor and a second from Commissioner Cummings on consent agenda minus the removed items. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Shows it passes unanimously with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. We are now on our pulled item. Mr. County Administrator, that's number 11, a status report, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we do have one speaker on this speaker card. I held it just because I knew it had been pulled. But this, Commissioners, is a status report on the Woodville Aquaculture Facility. Again, you've got some information analysis presented to you, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have. And we do have one speaker, as I noted, Verna Brock.
Ms. Brock? Yeah, you can go right to the podium there, just state your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes once that little green light comes on.
All right. My name is Verna Brock, my address is 866 Woodville Highway. I want to thank you all for having us addressing this issue. I was the Branch Manager of the Woodville Branch Library for many years, and I was there when this project was begun and watched it be built very shoddily. The site has been nothing but an eyesore to the community and to Leon County, to North Florida. It is the entryway into our park, to the community center, to the library. They have gone to dumping concrete blocks on the property now. I would be hard-pressed to ever believe that they plan to put anything there of any value. It has just become a dumping ground. I would ask you to do everything in your power to rectify this eyesore. Woodville does not deserve this horrific site in its boundaries. My three minutes are up?
You have, go ahead, finish.
Anyway, just the point is, is please, please do whatever you can to stop it, to fix it, to get rid of it. We deserve better in Woodville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brock.
All right, any further speakers, Mr. Administrator? All right, Commissioners, Commissioner Caban, I believe you pulled this item, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have a motion, I've been working with the County Attorney and the County Administrator on this, and I have a motion that I think is tailored carefully for this particular item. So, Mr. Chair, I would like to move Option 1 with an amendment to direct the County Administrator to bring back an agenda item that explores the feasibility of different potential uses that serve a public purpose on the site, to include a stormwater pond for potential flood mitigation, and to inquire with the owner of the property to determine if there is an interest in a potential sale.
All right, we've got a-
Mr. Chair, I second, I was second.
Outstanding. We've got a motion from Mr. Vice Chair and a second from Commissioner Cummings. Is there any discussion? Oh, sorry, carry on.
Commissioners, I want to start by saying I fully respect and support the role of agriculture in our community. I know that this is very important, consumer service especially in our rural communities. And I also want to say that I fully respect our private property rights, including all those protected under the Florida's Right to Farm Act, which after doing some, after our briefing and talking with the County Attorney, limits our local government authority to regulate bona fide agriculture activities. However, I believe it's important that we treat all property rights equal, and those protections are not misused to sidestep, you know, basic responsibilities and maintenance, you know, as we saw and what's continuing to happen right now with Washington Square. I don't want this to be a Washington Square. This project has been, construction, I believe, halted sometime in 2022. It's at vacant, no, this portion of the property no longer has its agriculture protection that's been removed by the property appraiser. And so my biggest concern here, this is right next to J. Lewis Hall Senior Park, which is our biggest, our biggest park in the non-incorporated area. It's used frequently by children, and you know, from my opinion, I deem the property unsafe. And so I tailored this motion because I think it gives the County Administrator to see, hey, a quick remedy, if the property owner, you know, wants to just be out, we can look to see if there is a public purpose for the property. It gives the County Administrator to come back to us and say, hey, there's interest in a sale, and if there's not, it can come back to us with an agenda item to look at further options. So that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Is there any discussion? Commissioner, I'm sorry, I've got Commissioner O'Keefe, then Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Caban, for asking for this item and this information. This is clearly, clearly a nuisance, makes absolute sense to me. What I'd like to know is, from staff, is what is the normal code compliance process? And how would that go for a property like this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I can respond to that. Well, first of all, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, everything that Commissioner Caban has said is accurate in terms of his description of the property. As the Board may be aware, and as we presented in the analysis, the property has a bit of a complicated history, with some of it under an agriculture exemption, and some of it under a certificate with the Department of Ag. However, as Commissioner Caban noted, we've been working on the issue along with the County Attorney's Office. I think there are portions of the property, and the County Attorney could probably, she could speak with more authority to this, that we could probably begin code enforcement action, at least on a portion of the property, very soon, and in response to a complaint, because again, our code compliance is a complaint-driven process. So I think that that's the posture we're in now. And again, I'd defer to the County Attorney if she had any more to add to that.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, we are a complaint-driven code enforcement jurisdiction. As previously mentioned and is in your agenda materials, the certificate for an aquaculture operation will expire until this month. It does not have the agricultural land classification on the approximately six-acre portion where that certificate was issued. So those protections under Chapter 824 of the statutes are not there. We do, I mean, the person could try to argue since this certificate's still live now that there is a bona fide farm operation there and use that certificate as evidence. We do think that that would not carry the day, that we do have enforcement authority at this time. But certainly, there's no question that if a complaint is received as of July 1, we will have code enforcement authority, and it would follow the normal process as laid out in the Board's Code.
Commissioner Caban on point.
Commissioner O'Keefe, just on point. Our office plans to file a complaint just directly from our office, which will, which will begin the code enforcement process.
Is, does any vote by the Board give you any more authority in the code enforcement process than a complaint?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
No, it does not. And in fact, once a complaint is received, it will go to staff. Staff will investigate. If they determine that there are violations on the property, it will then go to the Code Enforcement Board, the independent body, and it will follow the normal code enforcement process laid out in your Code ordinances.
And then ultimately, I think, if I'm just, I'm guessing, I'm not guessing, if I'm hearing what the issue is, would, could a code enforcement complaint process end up in the facility being, having to be removed or corrected so it wasn't such a nuisance?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So typically, what will happen is it goes to the Code Enforcement Board. If the Code Enforcement Board finds that there is a public health-safety issue, they will then refer it to the Nuisance Abatement Board, and under that process, the county could use that authority and those findings to go ahead and do the work itself, and then impose a lien on the property for the costs associated with that. Now again, that is in not common circumstances. The Nuisance Abatement Board has to determine that there is a danger to the public safety and welfare to do that.
That, that would still, that would be considered by them in the Code Enforcement Board following a complaint?
Correct.
Okay. My, so I am glad to hear that we expect a complaint to come in and that there's a process for it. I can't support the motion as it is, as considering if there's a public purpose, if we could buy it to get rid of the nuisance. And until we've gone through, or at least tried, the code enforcement process, which as we were learning, it looks like some of their protection should expire on July 1, that would allow us to do reasonable code enforcement process. And if that fails, and the results are, don't deal with the public health and safety nuisance issue, bringing it back for this type of action may make sense to me. But I'm not comfortable starting a process that is, well, we're going to consider buying and finding a public use for parcels that are nuisances, because I've got a list. If that's what we want to do, I've got a list we can start with, and I'm sure everyone does. And so I understand the issue, and I'm glad to hear that we, we are going to get beyond some of the protection that probably shouldn't have been there and start the code process. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Proctor, are you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm delighted that movement is occurring on this piece of property. The posture of our inquiry on this piece of property, is it to County Attorney, from your understanding, are we to attack? Are we doing eminent domain? Are we offering to purchase? Exactly what approach, besides the fact that we're going to cut the grass, what are we doing? Help me to understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
So I believe the motion was to accept the status report and direct the County Attorney to bring back an agenda item to explore potential public uses of the property and approach the landowner regarding a potential sale. So there's not any mention of initiating the eminent domain process or anything like that, it's really just exploring whether there are viable public purpose uses for the property, and inquiring whether there is an interest in sale at this point, but I would defer to Commissioner Caban to correct that if I am wrong.
So I want to understand, are we trying to secure interest in the owner's desire to sell in terms of the county being the buyer? Are we simply forcing him to sell to get up off the property? Help me to understand.
Commissioner Caban on point.
Commissioner Proctor, no. What I would like to do, this is more of an exploratory motion. I want to see what, we need to give the County Administrator permission to just engage with the property owner at that level. In conversation that I've had with staff, the J. Lewis Hall Senior Park down in Woodville, right now, that area is tapped on stormwater. So there's no more, there's, it's, there's no stormwater capacity at that particular location. And so right now, we're going to say, hey, this has the potential to be a stormwater pond, or what other public uses are available. If the seller comes back to the County Administrator and says, hey, I'm not interested in selling, then we'll have an update to come back from staff. But this just gives them permission to kind of go through some process and brings us back more information.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, our interpretation of the motion as well is to, it would just be information at this point provided to the Board relative to the owner's interest in selling, as well as potential public purposes for the site. And again, we would bring that information back to you. And I think Commissioner Caban's motion is just in the interest in expediting this, given that there may be a concurrent code enforcement review happening at the same time. So that's the way we understand the motion as well.
Now, over the years, this piece of property has enjoyed a state-registered zoning specific to it, and that state designation in rural aquacultural designation is prohibitive to the county meddling, it's sort of like US Appalachian Forest. It's sort of like the county doesn't have jurisdiction there. And with the state so designating this piece of property, what, I mean, what is our business to leap hurdles into the state's affair, which they hold a designated jurisdiction over?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for this property, they did apply for a certificate with the Department of Agriculture for an aquaculture operation. Department of Ag issued that. They even renewed it at one point. But Ag doesn't, you don't have to have an agricultural land classification to get a certificate from the Department of Agriculture, as long as you're zoned appropriately for whatever the use is. In this case, at the time, that property had that agricultural land classification. The certificate Commissioner Proctor was referencing expires at the end of this month. So it will no longer have that certificate from the Department of Agriculture, and it lost that, that six acres over which, there's still an agricultural classification for about 12 acres. for about 12.68 acres of the property. The other six acres where the aquaculture operation was cited has lost that agricultural land classification, hasn't had it since 2022. So it does not have that protection under the Florida Right to Farm Act anymore.
Well, I, I would like, in that context, to look at this property as a potential site, which the county would purchase from the context of us being willing to secure, if it means that much. For years now, I have goaded, begged and asked this commission to give consideration to equally pursuing the eyesight and eyesore of the building across the street from our faces that we all see every day and has been foot-tracking with respect to the opportunity of a downtown property immediately across the street from us. What hinders us from the interest of pursuing likewise the Washington Square piece of property, which we've had no real, we've been very indifferent to, but way down the street in Woodville, in the middle of acres and acres, there's quite a few properties jacked up there. And I just, I'm just a little miffed that the eyesore directly in our faces we miss seeing, but way down Woodville Highway, we do see. I don't want there to be a double standard. And I'd like for the owner of the property to be totally engaged to get not just government's point of view, but I need to hear from this owner. Finally, a county attorney, I heard Commissioner Caban say that his office would initiate a citizen's complaint, since we're complaint-driven code enforcement. Do or can or are we distinguishing our offices as elected officials? Are we like common citizens? And our offices filing a complaint is a citizen-driven complaint? Or are we talking about citizens who are unelected? In other words, to be able to make that complaint to, I'll use the word, sick government processes on private owners, gives to each of us a sense of police power, which heretofore I was unaware that we held. Help me.
Go ahead.
Chairman, so anyone can file a complaint?
Including county commissioners?
County commissioners are not prohibited in their individual capacity for filing, filing a complaint, just like any other constituent. The only thing in the statute that's prohibited is complaints cannot be anonymous. So the complainant has to put their name and information on the complaint. That was a change in law several years ago. So that is the only requirement for filing a complaint, is that the complainant has to be identified in the complaint.
Now, when county commissioners file a complaint with our code board, isn't that given priority and it ought to be prompt response to any complaint filed by one of us?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I would say no. A commissioner, just like any other constituent, can file a complaint and will go through the same process, and those complaints will be treated the same as a complaint from any other constituent.
I think that that needs to be dramatized, and I think that among our staff, that those sensitivities are made fully aware to our staff. In other words, when we put Commissioner Minor's name on something up there in his district, or Commissioner Minor, where we just drop things, he skips the line, comes to the front, and staff is with great fear and trembling. And not only, but the fact that Commissioner Minor filed it, it may well carry a lot more weight. I mean, it's like the judge downstairs calling the police and said, I think I see a crime, brother police. When the judge calls the police and said he's reporting a crime, the police tend to might weigh that judge's comments as, well, I better walk with the judge. And I'm concerned that in the police powers, which we would hold, our staff is likewise not feeling a sense of being leaned upon. I think that that's important. And as you're looking at what's going on in Los Angeles now, what the Marines want to see about citizens who are expressing themselves, we're just in a strange state, and we don't want for ours to be a runaway government, if you will. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Miss, Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say, whatever staff finds and refers to the code enforcement board, that is a separate, independent board made up of constituents who have complete discretion to determine whether violations actually exist and to enforce the code if they do. So, and staff would have to present any findings of a violations to the board to support any finding that staff made. So I hope that provides some reassurance to the board and to the community about the concerns Commissioner Proctor has expressed.
One, one final point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman, if I might. This is in my district. This is my district. The clock begins to toll at the expiration of the state's certification, it having this immunity. So this person would need, if this is a violation, would need to be noticed and some decision made, due process, is what I'm saying. But there won't be a retroactive enforcement when he was under state's immunity, would there? Could you tell me how, if the, if the clock begins to toll, it's not retroactive and a determination at what we're looking at? Because to me, those well could be building supplies that have been aligned there as concrete and in many instances for its intended purpose. That may well be the floor for that space. So it's eyesore, but it may well be building materials. And, but just help me to understand, when does the clock of code enforcement or violation occur?
Go ahead, Madam Attorney.
So there's never any retroactive application in any code enforcement case. Once a complaint is filed, staff has to go out and investigate. They have to determine that there are violations. The property owner is provided with due process throughout the process. It takes a number of months. They're given opportunities to cure even after violations are found, before any adverse actions are taken or any fines start to accrue on property. So I can confirm for you, Commissioner Proctor, that no violation would be retroactive in this case.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner Caban, and then I'm going to Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Cummings.
I just want to, I just want to make one brief point. To me, this isn't just a nuisance. I think this is also a life safety issue, especially with the proximity to a park where young children play all day, every day. And, you know, in the past, I don't, I don't recall the year, but I look at this issue like some of the sand mining pit issues that we had years ago, where a, a child trespassed into a sand mining pit and died. And I look at this here, I could see very easily a young child climbing up that fence, falling into that, you know, whatever structure it is. And, I mean, we wouldn't, no one would know about it. So when I look at this, this is close proximity to a park that's frequently used by children, and I think that this is a life safety issue. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Minor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Caban, thank you for bringing this up to the commission. Appreciate it. I'm going to support the motion as stated. I do have some concerns about the potential solution of having Leon County purchase the property. I think the opportunity cost for that is very high. I think that there are other properties that are also good candidates. If we were to open the floodgates on that, I think there are other properties throughout the county that are also good candidates for that type of action. So I'm very reluctant to kind of go down that road. But your motion as stated is very exploratory. And so this is an informational item coming back to us to talk about what options might lay before us in terms of the community, making sure that that property is cleaned up, that the safety issues are addressed, et cetera. So I'm going to support the motion and look forward to seeing the agenda item come back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I second Commissioner Caban's motion because I believe that the exploratory nature of it would be very informative to us as members, you know, of, of this particular body. But I see the concern about code enforcement as being a totally separate issue. It is bifurcated approach, in my opinion, and that was not, I don't believe it was part of Commissioner Caban's motion that I second. I think it's independent what the county does, if there are any code violations or what have you. It's totally independent of staff bringing back an agenda item for us to consider. Am I correct, Madam, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. County?
That's our interpretation. That is our interpretation, yes.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely. So I think the notion is that jurisdiction could begin from the county's standpoint as of June 30. That's when the permit, the aqua farming permit expires. I believe that's what the county attorney indicated. So I think we, we might be sort of speculating at this point until we get the agenda item coming back, addressing all the variables that might be available to the county. Might not be any available based on staff analysis. But I think right now, it's just sort of premature for us to either go down that road, explore an eminent domain or anything else until we get that, until we get that, that report back. And as long as staff's work is not inhibitive of what code enforcement from the county's standpoint can do to address the health, safety, welfare, particularly of our children that might be in close proximity to this particular eyesore, then I don't see any, any problem with us moving forward with this particular motion, Mr. Chair. So thank you, Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Proctor. I know that's in your, in your district, so I know you're certainly concerned from a multitude of different directions about that particular property. But I think the motion is certainly in order, and I'm looking forward to having that information come back for us to act upon. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I'm going to support the motion as well, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that it's well received. I think it's well timed. I think that that, you know, we've hosted now two really nice baseball tournaments at J. Lewis Hall Woodville Park, which has brought, gosh, I don't know, hundreds of people from around the state and the region to that area. And even three or four years ago, when we did it the first time, I had a lot of people going, what in the world is that? And I think that picture that we're looking at right there really speaks volumes to the necessity of this action, which is obviously exploratory in nature, it's just kind of informational. But I'd love to know what's going on there, because it looks like the only thing they're farming are concrete blocks. And I do agree, that's dangerous. I think a kid walks over there and climbs on that pile of concrete blocks, that thing could collapse, there could be a car under there or a tree that's rotted out or something. I mean, that's a really dangerous-looking situation right there, and that's right next to a really nice county park. So I think it's a great motion, Commissioner Caban, and I will support it. Seeing no further discussion, we've got a motion from Commissioner Caban and a second from Commissioner Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
We have passes five to two with Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Proctor in opposition. Commissioners, we are almost done with consent. We had a late speaker card come in for someone who wanted to speak. Yeah, yeah, we're going to come back to that after we finish consent. So yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number five, we have a speaker card on item number five, which has been removed from the agenda. John Gibby.
Mr. Gibby, I assume you still want to speak on it? By all means, yes, sir, come on. Name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
John Gibby, 4887 Gum Road. Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman and Board Members. My name's Gibby, and I own property in the Lake Munson watershed next to the Capital Circle maintenance area that was to be discussed in the removed agenda item, across the street from the garbage transfer station. This area hasn't been maintained for years, parts of it, despite FDOT standards and agreements. Litter from the county's solid waste facility builds up and pollutes my land and Munson Slough. At first, I thought this was just a city issue, but the county is responsible too and paid to do this work. I've reported the problems over the past year, runoff, trash, and overgrowth. Respondents have come, but action is slow. The system is broken. I know the Board was scheduled to consider a new agreement with the city today. I respectfully ask you to ensure the county is meeting its current FDOT obligations before they expire, to include real accountability like financial penalties and any new deal that comes forward between the county and the city. It appears the current contract has expired, and litter service will be provided by the county for Brent Pell's statement to me. Let's fix the system before spending more taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibby. All right, Commissioners, we're done with consent. Now, we're going to circle back to awards and presentations. Commissioner Maddox, you are recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just glad the whole Pittman family got to see what Dad does for a living across the street over the legislature.
That was a good little glimpse right there.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
For Dozierme, I apologize for being late. If I could have School Board member Jones come up as honorary today, Sean Pittman has an award that's given out from the school board by the name of the Sean Pittman Awards.
Okay.
I think it's fitting that he'd be here. Today, we're going to honor Mr. Sean Pittman, his family, the whole crew. For the inspiring work they have done, all in this community, but in the authoring he has done for Disaffected. And so.
Congratulations, sir.
Proclamation reads, whereas Attorney Sean Pittman is the founder of the Pittman Law Group, ESP Media Production Company, and the Big Ben Minority Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Attorney Sean Pittman has been a stalwart in the community, consistently demonstrating exemplary leadership, entrepreneurial spirit, and unwavering commitment to excellence. And whereas Attorney Sean Pittman has added author to his list of accomplishments, his book, Disaffected, released in September 2024, has achieved notable popularity, becoming a bestseller on Amazon and in bookstores nationwide.
You can ignore that, Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chair, you trying to be quiet? It is also rated the number one new release in public affairs and administration. And whereas Disaffected has been praised by prominent figures, including CNN commentator Makari Sellers, civil rights attorney Benjamin Crump, Ambassador Allen Katz, Pennsylvania Speaker of the House Joanne McClintock, Nevada Attorney General Aaron Ford, and pediatric neurosurgeon Dr. Myron Rolle, for its insightful analysis of the political system and its compelling illustration of the power of the ballot. And whereas the success of the book has resonated across the country, Attorney Sean Pittman has appeared in cities including Tallahassee, Atlanta, Miami, Riviera Beach, where he hills, West Palm Beach, Washington, D.C., New York, and Philadelphia to discuss the book and its implications, implications with diverse audiences. And whereas Disaffected has garnered critical acclaim and widespread readership, shaping political thought and public discourse, it reflects a lifelong commitment to deepening the democratic process and promoting informed electoral participation through research, education, and commentary, and adds a call to action and petitions to increase across the ballot box by advocating for the federal government to make Election Day a holiday in America. Have we done that at the county yet, Commissioner?
Yes, we have.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Leon County Commissioners in Leon County that we recognize Disaffected by Attorney Sean Pittman as a work that impacts the broader social impact and economic landscape of our community and this nation. This is dated. This is dated the 10th of June, signed by the Chair, attested to by the County Administrator, and signed by the rest of the commission.
When he told me he was going to do this, I was like, why? And then when he went here, I thought maybe he changed his mind. So imagine just sitting back there like, maybe, maybe let me check my text messages. I was looking, is there junk for text messages? I was looking there too and didn't find it. Thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, very much. And Mr. Chair, Mr. Administrator, and Commissioners, we all know each other. Thank you for this proclamation. I say a lot in the book, so let me simply just thank some people. My girls were going to sing a song for y'all. Y'all, but, but they leaned over after going through all that and said, Daddy, can we just go home and do some homework? Mind you, they're out of school this summer, but, but I thank my girls because, but for them, I may have never decided that I cared what the future held, what kind of world that they would live in. That was part of the reason that the book came, and I want to thank my wife because, you know, but for her getting involved in Needlepoint, I might not have had time to actually do this book. Joking aside, but I thank her for being my, my physical AI, because I spell words wrong a lot, and she helped me through that. And she encouraged me over and over again when, when I got blocked, mental blocked, and I thank her for that. And my office that are here, some of them are here, without them, there's no time to, there's no time to do things you want to do, you just have to do what pays the bills. So I thank them so much. And Darryl and Nick have been such great friends. And we talk a lot about this, the subject matters in this book. This book is about listening and learning. I got intrigued by understanding that there were so many more people that don't vote than people that do vote, and then it begs the question of why, why don't they vote? And what's interesting is, we ask that question a lot, but we never listen to the reason. We ask the question only to hear yes or no. And as soon as someone says no, we get a visceral reaction and we hear nothing else. I decided to start listening to what they say. And guess what? They got great reasons why they don't. They have reasons that will really shock you and reasons that will say to you, wow, how can I change that? But if you don't listen to that, you don't know it. So Disaffected takes you through across the nation, people who tell you why they don't vote, and it actually tries to capture why, it actually tries to give them, give you a manuscript for why they should vote. And some of you are in the book. Darryl Jones is in the book a couple times, but particularly during COVID, COVID, when he was the chairman of the school board, there were some interesting things that came out of that process that left people either encouraged or discouraged. But it has an impact, and we will never truly know who we are as a country until the 90 million people that decide not to show up to vote for you decide to show up. And we all have a part to play in that. So I thank you for this. If you haven't picked it up yet, please do. If you don't want to buy it, stop by the office. We got more than we want to, than we should, actually. But I appreciate this recognition so much, and, and thank you all for getting my family here. It might be the first, I know it's the first time the girl's been here. My wife has been here asking y'all for money when she worked for Coca. Do you need any money today? Okay, all right. Thank you all very much. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Pittman, we got a few Commissioners that would like to talk to you. Commissioner Minor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pittman, I've got a copy of Disaffected on the table in my TV room. I haven't read it yet because I've got this comp plan business that's been taking up so much of our time. There are a lot of reasons to want to be done with the comp plan. Another reason I have is to finish that comp plan so I can start reading the book. So thank you for everything you did. Congratulations on the book's success and looking forward to getting through it and then talk with you about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Pittman, congratulations on your book, on your beautiful family, your beautiful wife, Audra. You are mover and shaker in this community, and we just appreciate your willingness to address issues and speak out on issues, not just local, statewide, but national issues that certainly affect all of us. So we just love you, we thank you, and I had gone online to purchase your book, and it was sold out, so maybe I need to come by your office and purchase one, which means it's one of the best sellers. So we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Pittman, Mrs. Pittman, family, Pittmans, congratulations. And I know that this was a joint family effort because I heard about Attorney Sean Pittman's English essays when he was in college, but with four ghost writers. This has to be a great book because I know Sean didn't write the book. Thank you, Jesus. But God has been good to him because anytime a man has daughters, and he has three, you know that God blesses him when the girls grow up and look just like their mother. And so he's been blessed in a multitude of ways because his girls favor their mom. Sean, you all right with me, brother? And I'm going to check out Disaffected. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Commissioner Vice Chair, go ahead.
Sean, I appreciate your friendship, and we know we've had some, some good times. In 2022, we were in the trenches together, and I appreciate all that you do, and it's inspiring to see, I think, what Commissioner Cummings said, you know, you're everywhere, man, and you do a lot of different things and you work hard, and I know, I know the hustle that you do, and I see what you do for your family, and it's, it's inspiring to see. So I appreciate you, man.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman, just real quick, I'd say, you know, echo the sentiments of the board. We appreciate your book. I purchased mine very quickly before they sold out. I keep leaving it under my teenage daughter's pillows, so in the hopes that it will inspire them to get engaged and get involved. And I think it's important as a high school teacher, the message of, you know, the disenfranchisement, the disenchantment that so many people in our country have with our electoral systems and our politics and the rancidity of the, of the narratives and the, and the conversations that we see on cable news and, and how vital it is for people to get involved, get engaged, but at the very least, vote. You know, we kind of get the government we deserve, the government we vote for, and your book really captures that. So thank you so much. Thank you for your dedication and obviously decades of work in the halls of politics and policy and elections have informed your perspective very well. So thank you for being here and congratulations on your book. And again, I purchased mine.
Mr. Chairman, I follow what you said. That's the other thing about the credibility of the book. For me, the book opens up on moment one with credibility because Sean Pittman has been truly involved and in the trenches of electoral processes ever since I can remember. And I don't think he sits out any kind of electoral process. So knowing his track record for engagement in democratic practices, I'm going to open that book because I know it's not just some college professor writing a book to get promotion and tenure, but this is a practitioner and a warrior who's been on the front line. So I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
And if you haven't already done the audiobook, I would suggest School Board Member Parks to read the narration.
Jones.
To narrate.
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Pittman.
Thank you all. Okay. Thank you all. It's good when your daughter's a little like you.
It's all right. We got a lot of Darrells.
No, but that's the only important one.
All right, Commissioners, we are on general business in record time, I think. Mr. Administrator, is that where we're at?
That's where we are.
All right. We will take up the first item on general business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is an update on your 2026 World Athletics Cross Country Championships at Appalachia Regional Park. Commissioners, we are seven months away from hosting the 2026 World Athletic Cross Country Championships at the ARP, and I wanted to provide the board with a quick update, and you're going to hear from Carrie Post, and we'll see if she can match my enthusiasm here. But if you know Carrie, you'll know that's not going to be a problem at all. But, but Commissioners, the item seeks your acceptance of the report, and again, you're going to hear from Carrie in just a minute. We do have a fiscal impact. However, since being awarded the bid in 2022, we've committed to strategically plan investment for successful execution of this global event, with some expenses to be offset through the support of state and national partner organizations and corporate sponsorships. To date, the board has allocated $500,000 in tourism funds, and additional tourism funding will be included in the development of the 2026 budget. We're anticipating 550 elite athletes competing for more than 60 country commissioners, drawing over 10,000 spectators from around the world. It'll have at least a, about a four and a half million dollar direct economic impact to the community, and the international competition will put our community on the world stage. And again, the last time, fun fact, the last time the World Athletics Cross Country Event was held in the United States, it was 1992 in Boston, Massachusetts. So we're ready to, again, provide an exceptional venue for the, for the Worlds, and we're recommending option number one. Carrie's here to provide an update. We do not have speakers on this item, so Carrie, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm so excited to come before you today to share an update on the World Athletics Cross Country Championships to be hosted at Appalachia Regional Park. We call it ARP. So if I say we just, just, it's at ARP on Saturday, January 10th, 2026. Building on more than 15 years of strategic course development, event bidding, and planning, and sustained investment, we are so proud that Leon County is going to be hosting the most prestigious cross-country event in the world. As County Administrator highlighted, we're, you know, we're 550 elite athletes, 60 countries, 10,000 spectators, about four and a half million dollars direct economic impact, but also global visibility. So since 2009, the Leon County Division of Tourism, working in partnership and collaboration with Leon County Parks and Rec, we have hosted over 100 large-scale cross-country events and 12 national cross-country championships. However, the World Athletics Cross Country Championship event is going to be unlike any other event held at ARP previously. Our theme for the course is going to be bold and inspiring, welcoming the world to Florida. We're leveraging Florida's unique, global, and very distinct global tourism brand, along with the goal of delivering a very demanding, memorable, and unique expedition of the World Cross Country Championship to date. This global event is led by two extraordinary co-chairs. Taylor Wheaton, who is our Senior Sports Director at Tourism, is at Tallahassee, and Amanda Heidecker, Director of County Parks and Rec, again, along with various county staff that has been involved from, and I'm going to name a few here, so forgive me for it, IT, CMR, emergency management, sustainability, LCSO, EMS, GIS, legal. I mean, we've got so many county departments involved because this is a huge event. Plus, a handful of very specialized contractors have been working tirelessly to transition from vision. We've been thinking about this for, you know, over four years, five years, to now moving from vision to execution to designing and building capacity to host a world-class championship event. So the first critical step was creating a local organizing group. Developed and overseen by the co-chairs, the local organizing group really serves as the backbone for the event. Like you hear a lot at Super Bowl, you have the local organizing committees. These really are the backbone of the event operations. World Athletics event delivery model calls for a multidisciplinary, very locally-based group that covers every facet of World Athletics event, and our LOG mirrors that structure. The LOG is built around 10 core teams. But I must share, within those 10 core teams, there are 34 specific work areas within those 10 core teams. So I'm just briefly going to kind of highlight, it's medical, event services, volunteer operations, spectator services, marketing communications, media operations, mass participation events, protocol, logistics, and competition. So that's a lot. Those are the 10 core areas, and there's 34 specialized work areas within those 10 core components. And currently, we have about more than 100, actually, local experts currently involved because we have to make sure every single World Athletics requirement is met. Every operational detail must meet or exceed the international standards applied at the recent championships in Bathurst, Australia, and Belgrade, Serbia. So again, as you might imagine, like, think of, this is the Olympics of the sport of cross-country. So there are so many different requirements that absolutely must be met or exceeded. And again, so we are working in all of these areas. So as we welcome the world to Florida, World Athletics charged us to bring cross-country back to its roots, and that is with challenging terrain and unpredictable elements, and as you might imagine, we are up to the task. We are planning six immersive elements throughout the course with distinctly Florida themes. We will be, now, envision this, kind of go with me here, walk with me, as you would say, Commissioner Proctor, walk with me here. We are playing six immersive elements. So we are going to start from the starting line will be modeled after Florida's historic capital. That's the starting line. Will be modeled directly from the Florida historic capital, symbolically setting off on a journey throughout the state's most iconic landscapes. So envision that you're going to be running through water and waves and sandy beaches and swampy mud and among varied wildlife, and also on an elevated roller coaster obstacle. So all of this is designed, these six immersive elements, and spectator engagement is really integral to the event, and particularly so in each element, because that is one thing we have brought through all of our events at ARP, is we, it's very, for, and many of you, I think all of you have been out there, it's very spectator friendly. It's almost like the Masters, you can get to the front side, the backside. So again, Worlds is no different, except that in each element, there are going to be themed fan zones, activations, right next to the elements themselves. So we're partnering with other destination marketing organizations around the state to deliver a very memorable kind of wow factor for the athletes and visitors alike. So think about the beaches, right next to it is going to be Panama City Beach stuff, and the Everglades is going to be where the mud element is. So all those are going to be tied to iconic landscapes around Florida. So in addition to the world-class epic course that we're going to be building, the event schedule has now been finalized. There will be five official championship races, including and an awards ceremony that will be broadcast globally by NBC in over 70 countries. In the afternoon, after the official races, there will be four Fun Run races for all ages, all skill levels, to experience the rare opportunity to compete on the very same course that just earlier that day created World Champions. So keep in mind for the Fun Races, start getting your teams together, because again, very much on the Fun Run in the afternoon, it'll be a lot of fun. We are now in the final stages, the development stages for the ticketing portal, the Fun Run Race Registration Platform, and the merch site. You know, we got to have merch. And all three of these are scheduled to go live within the next 30 to 60 days. We're, like I said, very much working through in the final development. From the marketing perspective, all of the county's creative resources are being marshaled for Worlds. Again, this is a tremendous opportunity, including, of course, Division of Tourism at Tallahassee, the Zimmerman Agency, and the Office of Community and Media Relations, CMR. And CMR, I really got to give a shout out to them. They have been terrific working with us on the marketing, outstanding work, and they're rare and ready to go on our local engagement stuff. So we're rolling. So we're rolling out a multi-tier marketing communication strategy targeting local, state, national, and international audiences, with the goal of not only generating awareness, but then converting it into ticket sales and, of course, room nights. But we, keep in mind, we're also expanding our outreach to the global running community while showcasing Tallahassee and Leon County to the world. Robust local and regional community engagement supplemented with a well-structured sponsorship program is really key to the success of this event. We're steadily making progress. Right now, we have more than 500 volunteers have already signed on. And so far, over 100 staff members from county departments and various community organizations are already directly involved. We're actively securing sponsorships, and we have six commitments to date. There are three public institution sponsors and three event supplier sponsors, and we are continuing to aggressively pursue more prospects. It's also important to note that sustainability is a core value, not just for Leon County, but World Athletics as well. Working closely with the Leon County Office of Sustainability, we will be utilizing the internationally recognized athletics for a better world standard at this event. It will be the first time that this innovative approach for sustainable event delivery will be applied to a World Athletics Cross Country Championship, and the whole, all designed to curb waste and reduce carbon emissions. So in conclusion, the world event execution remains on schedule across every facet. All key operational milestones have been met, and the World Athletics staff, I got to tell you, has been so complimentary of the county's efforts to prepare for the most prestigious cross-country event in the world. Again, they're always commenting on the co-chairs, how organized and how far along we are, and they are so thrilled. They've been out to the course, they were blown away. The fact that we even have a year-round course and everything that's out there, they are just blown away. So I can tell you, we have the best team in place, we have the best cross-country course in the world, and we are well on our way to welcome the world to Florida's capital county, as well as to set a new standard for all future cross-country championships. So thank you so much for the opportunity to share a brief update. Taylor, Amanda, myself will be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Carrie. Mr. Administrator, we appreciate it. That, I can't say enough about this team. You now have, after hearing from Carrie, just a glimpse of the logistics and really the whole of organization effort that's gone into this. Want to thank the board again for your vision, and just to let you know that we're going to see it through, as Carrie said, and host the best world championships that, to date, here in Leon County. And as Carrie said, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner Minor here in the queue, and followed by Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carrie, it's just tremendous work. This is incredibly exciting. Yes, to, it's not just you, but to the entire team and for everybody, everybody. You know, it's incredible to think that a former landfill has transformed, has been transformed into a world-class cross-country venue. It's incredible. And you mentioned about how the last 15 years or so, we've had 100 events there, large-scale, and 12 national championships. One thing in addition to that, though, is over the last 16 years, we've benefited from $80 million in direct economic impact, which is just incredible. And that's Leon County, your team, staff here over the years who have done that, just, it just absolutely boggles the mind. A couple of questions on the Fun Runs. You said it's going to be basically by ages to accommodate everybody. Will you have, will families be able to participate with multiple ages going to one Fun Run?
Absolutely. There are four different Fun Runs. There's the all-ages, then there's kids, 14 and under, then there is, and then there's families, again, you've got, that's under the all-ages, then there's a high school, because as you know, we have very active high school teams at our community, and then just an all-community Fun Run, again. So there's, there are several options to choose from.
That's great. I think I might take my family, my 11-year-old might leave me in the dust, but I might take that chance anyway and take the whole family out. So that's going to be really exciting. You mentioned that we've got 500 volunteers signed up already, which is incredible. How many more volunteers do you think you need?
As of right now, we think we're good. We're going to kind of wait, again, as we are finalizing all of the logistics, we may need more, but we've got them all. These are folks that are already registered. They are in, they are ready, there may even be a wait list, as far as, there is a wait list, there we go. We actually, it was amazing, within the first two weeks, when we first announced, when we announced it, we got over 500 folks. And so we do have a wait list, but again, as we really start putting down the final details on everything that we're needed, there may be a need for more, but as of right now, I think we think we're, we're good.
That's terrific. Listen, everybody, mark your calendars down for January 10th, 2026. If you've never been to a cross-country event before, go to this one. This is going to be a community-wide event. We want to show all these people traveling from around the world that Tallahassee is the place to be, Leon County is the venue that they want to come back to. So thank you very much for all your work, you and your team, outstanding. Looking forward to January 10th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Carrie, I definitely would like you to speak at my funeral, and, because you're the only person could just say, "Bill Proctor!" He was no good. He's low down, sorry. And it sounds so good, you know, you just make anything sound great. And I love to hear your voice. That's incredible. Carrie, we're excited, you know, we share your excitement, you're always excited. One of the things that, you know, the NFL teams are opening now with their NFL, call it mini-camps, and my doctor hasn't cleared my left knee to report, you know, the camp yet, but I want to try out with the Tampa Bay Bucks, but their quarterback doing so good that, you know, I think he has it for this year. But maybe me and Commissioner O'Keefe will show up for the very fun, fun run, and the non-competitive run, and we'll walk our way through the course. What I wanted to ask is your willingness to, that we receive from Commissioner Caban, I've asked him as a member of the TDC, if he would give leadership to the entertainment, celebration, fun part, nighttime, party kind of thing. And he's indicated he's willing to discuss and bring that too, and meet with you all. I don't know how old these runners are, if they have to go straight to bed, I don't know. But I believe that for downtown, post-event, downtown event, I think that Commissioner Caban would give us great leadership in sharing that, that part of what I think would be hospitality extraordinary, and in keeping with the appetites of people from worldwide. Because we dropped them boots on the ground, they may not know what we're doing in Tallahassee, but they need to see those boots on the ground. And if you open at our next, when is our next TDC meeting?
September.
September, oh yeah. We'll have that thing rocking. So Commissioner Caban, if you would grace us with leadership in that regard, as a member of the TDC, I ask your leadership, your thoughtfulness.
Commissioner Caban?
I think you mean the DIA, the Downtown Improvement Authority, as a member of the DIA. I think that they're, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure, go ahead.
I think there's some opportunity with, with events such as this, is that, you know, we could look at partnering with the Downtown Improvement Authority, and looking at, like, maybe an event somewhere in the downtown area, maybe Cascades, maybe on Adams Street, and have like maybe some kind of like kickoff event where we kind of bring, we bring all the participants and their families, and just something of that nature. Just, we've had some conversations about it, the DIA. I've talked to the Ely, the Executive Director, but I think there's definitely some opportunity and some synergy when we have an event such of this nature, so looking at incorporating it with, you know, Cascades and some of our other, you know, amenities to show off, you know, Leon County, as well as downtown.
Yes, ma'am.
The event does call for, there's a big welcome dinner, there are other events I know that are part of this, so we'd love to explore additional conversation, but some is, are very set. The one that we are having, the welcome dinner, will be at the Champions Club, is that right? Yep, the Champions Club, and then, so we're going to be a lot at College Town, and so I know we are looking to, again, kind of move it around. So we are more than happy to explore that for downtown and see what opportunities may exist. But the event itself is fairly structured, but before and after, absolutely. Because also, to Commissioner Proctor's point, is these are all adults, and after running, people want to have a good time. So, and we definitely want to show them that here in our planning for it, but we are certainly willing to, again, because we are also going to be hosting, two days afterwards, USA Track and Field National Club Championship. So again, there's going to be a lot of opportunity, I mean, we're going to be, I mean, really, our community will be on display, and again, there will definitely be event opportunities. So happy to talk with you and Ely and everyone else to, again, to solidify, solidify those plans.
Okay, awesome. And you guys are doing a great job. This is, this is going to be very exciting, and I love when we are expanding out into different tourism industries, and I think that's how we really create a diverse year-round tourism market. So wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Cummings, you were in the queue, are you still good? Do you want to, Commissioner Cummings, you want to talk? Yeah, you fell out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Post, congratulations, you guys are doing an awesome job, and I just, I just remember doing my centennial, I mean, you were just amazing as far as leadership from the county standpoint, and you're doing the same thing. But I'll ask you like I asked the county administrator in my briefing, why couldn't I have gone to Australia and Serbia? Were you, were you one of the representatives that went to those two countries to just?
I was not. The subject matter experts went to really look at the technical, all the technical aspects, although there were several TDC members that were very, very interested as well.
Oh, okay. And then one last thing, I really love the creativity of the six courses that you all have designed. Are any of them already designed, or they're in the design mode right now?
Actually, they're, I mean, they've been sort of designed, now we're looking on the logistics to build them, and we have, as you know, every fall is our cross-country season. And so we have, I believe, seven regular cross-country championships this fall. So it's once those conclude in November, we flip the course, basically, and will then start all the development for Worlds.
Awesome. Well, just thank you so much. I think that's really innovative and creative, and hats off to you and your team, and we're really looking forward to January 2026.
Thank you. And you get it, I must mention that the Fun Runs get medals as well.
About that, okay. Thank you.
All participants.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Maddox, could you make a motion for us, because we still need one?
Yeah, move acceptance of staff recommendation, option number one.
I second, Mr. Chair.
We've got a motion, a second. Commissioner Maddox, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carrie, great job. Amanda, Taylor, again, great job. I actually wanted to remind you all that Amanda was over our sports council for a while, and want to give our county administrator kudos for snatching her away and putting her over our parks, that she's done an amazing job there. And so we continue to have star after star after star be developed at Leon County, and start to influence what happens across the state when it comes to public administration. And that's by no mistake, that's by the hard work of people like Carrie and the mentorship she's provided, and people like our county administrator and senior staff. And so I wanted to highlight that point in that we are really, really, really developing good talent here, and recognizing good talent as it matriculates through our, through our systems and universities here in Leon County. The Appalachian Regional Park has been nothing short of a gym ever since we made our initial investment years ago. How long, how long ago was that? About five years, how long ago was it now?
Since, from the, the $2.5 million that we just did?
Oh, no, no, no.
Or from the start, 2012, nine? We started doing it, but the minute, that was the $250,000 investment in 2009.
That's right, that's right. Now, as I remember it, that came as a petition from FSU for us to spruce that track up, because they saw a great possibility for us, that $250,000 has, has paid for itself over and over again over the past years, and even the $2 million that we just invested a couple years ago, again, continues to pay for itself. And so I'm looking for opportunities across the, across the county for us to find other sports facilities that are natural in nature, that we can continue to expound upon and invest money in to reap that benefit and that return on investment. This was, again, a waste facility that was shut down, that we turned into a world-class track. Maybe our trails can become world-class bike trails, or something of that nature. And really what it takes is it takes someone who knows what it needs to look like, the vision for it, and a little bit of investment from us, and a little bit, a little bit of faith from us, and we could, we could really continue to do something special. I think with us being Trellehassee, as we have been named, and all of the natural features that we have, we have to continue to take advantage of those things and, and make sure that we are reaping as much benefit financially as we can. And again, I want to thank Carrie and her team for what you've done and the way you've gone after these things. As I understand it, this was a joint venture that started some years ago from not just the TDC, but also state was involved, maybe even?
Gulf Winds.
Gulf Winds, and then we get some sports, Florida Sports Foundation helped too.
They've been supportive of all of our, our national events, always. So international was, you know, a given to them. But yes, they've always been partnering and offered funding support.
So I did want to get them, want to thank the, I obviously thank them for all the help they provide as well. And let's continue to roll in the way we're rolling with the Appalachian Regional Park and the gym that track has become, but I really want us to think about, start looking at other opportunities that we have with our parks, or with our trails, to see if we can just invest a little to make a lot when it comes to the offerings that we have for national and statewide sporting events. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you so much. I don't know what I can add to what's already been said. Following up on the mountain bike trail, we, I know we are starting our process for making some of those, I'm going to assume world-class mountain bike trails. Are we already on track or keeping an eye out to, once those are complete, get the World Mountain Biking Championships here, or things like that?
To date, we've hosted regional, like, there's a, Sorbas one, it's a southeast championship that we've had here. Right now, we need a little more development to make us at that level. I mean, part of the challenge for us here, I mean, we can build some things, but we're never going to get the elevation that they have out West. But we certainly have the quality and all the other infrastructure, so it does make it a very attractive product or market for us, and we're pursuing the IMBA, which is the International Mountain, the Ride Center for the International Mountain Biking Designation. So we are in the process on that, and that'll be another feather in our cap to be able to go after more regional, and then ultimately, once we get the designation, national championships.
Fantastic. Just fantastic work, and also, I'm glad to know Fun Run people get medals. Commissioner Proctor, you're on your own. I already have metal in my ankle. I do not need a medal from the Fun Run. I'll walk with you, but I won't run with you.
I'm going to need somebody else, though.
All right, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Well, I'm, no, not, that's too much.
Taylor, Amanda, Carrie, thank you for your dedication to this event. You know, people come up to me all the time, Commissioners, and they're like, "Man, well, she looked like you run a lot." And I'm like, "Yes, I run all the time."
To the table.
I run to Chick-fil-A. If you guys, I think we should have a Chick-fil-A Fun Run, where at the end you get to, like, get some chicken nuggets and then jump in a pool of Chick-fil-A sauce or something. Yeah, I make fun of my students who are cross-country athletes, and I say, you know, your, your sport is what other sports do for punishment. You know what I'm saying? So like, if you show up late to baseball practice, you do some cross-country. Which is, you know, if you, if you don't do good in a basketball game, you're going to do some cross-country. So I think it's magnificent. Obviously, we have a fantastic running community here in Leon County, and that has been accentuated by the incredible facility that this county commission and previous county commissions and this county administration have dedicated to building at the Appalachian Regional Park. I think we're all looking very much forward to, to attending this event and seeing all the people from all over the world. I think that Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Proctor's idea is a great idea. I don't know how it fits into the schedule, and we probably mess them with things we shouldn't mess with, but like, a big kickoff event, or a big post-run event, you know, I've been to the Boston Marathon in Boston, and that is a massive event with an expo center and all that stuff. I think a concert, or, you know, some kind of downtown get-down, or something like that, I think that would help get the community involved, because, you know, I mean, people going about their everyday lives probably aren't thinking about this. And if we can have a downtown get-down in January, or something like that, or a downtown concert or something, maybe you can coordinate with the concert series or something, you know. know, I think that's a great idea to help expose this event to the broader community. Because we do have a very sort of prolific subculture of running in Leon County, but you know, a lot of people aren't paying attention to that. So congratulations again. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your work and putting this together. I know you're going to make us shine. So we appreciate it more than you know.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, I mean, in America, event, I mean, it's not really happening until there's a T-shirt and a hat out. When is the T-shirts coming? I mean?
There will be swag. It is-
Stuff we all get.
Yeah. Exactly. There will be T-shirts, so yes.
Great, T-shirts. And Carrie, you, I'll, I'll tell you what my size of running suit is. I'll let you know what my-
Track suit.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Amanda and Taylor and Commissioner Administrator staff. Commissioners, we've got a motion for staff recommendation to accept the report, and I know we're all excited about it, and a second. I believe Commissioner Maddox made the motion. Commissioner Cummings made the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show it passes unanimously with Commissioner O'Keefe out of chambers. Commissioners, we're on to our second item on general business, number 15. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item number 15, I'm going to defer to our county attorney.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as requested by the board at the April 8, 2025 meeting, this item provides the board with an update regarding the restoration of the public roads and rights of way impacted by the Washington Square Project to include the estimated cost for the county legal options to pursue against the developer and owner. As stated in the agenda item, there have been recent discussions with the developer who through a representative and directly has agreed to the scope of work that would be required to prepare the county's rights of way, which is why staff is recommending option number one to accept the status report, but also option number two, which would authorize staff to enter into such an agreement with the owner and developer to memorialize the owner's and developer's agreement to restore the county rights of way, but it would also authorize the, my office to pursue all legal remedies available at law and equity against the owner and developer should those negotiations over the agreement terms fail or the owner and developer fail to perform. It would be a fairly quick turnaround. Public Works has said it would take approximately 60 days, no more, to complete the scope of work. So just to reassure the board, were you to approve option two and we were to enter into an agreement, there would be a quick deadline for any completion. And if we fail to even reach terms, this also gives us the flexibility to immediately file suit and seek, at least initially, relief to compel them to remove their materials that are in the right of way, but also to secure their site, which would have to occur before the county could do anything to repair the rights of way. Happy to answer any questions the board may have, but we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move options one and two.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for staff recommendation, options one and two. Commissioner O'Keefe, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Jassy for, and Vince for, for pushing this forward. I know that people may not realize it, but your office has been working on this well before we brought it up in the prior meeting. I just have some questions about the process because my main concern is that we are doing what makes the quickest possible fix to the roads. So if we approve this today and the developer signs an agreement, how soon do we expect barriers removed and road restoration could begin?
Madam Attorney, you can speak freely.
We would put a, a deadline that's very short, like I said. Public Works staff, which is the technical expert in this area, has said it would take no longer than 60 days to complete this work. So we would put a very tight deadline with no possibility of extension in that agreement. And if they fail to perform, we will move forward under direction from the board to initiate litigation to, to reach the result that the board has set it wants, which is its rights of way back.
If we were to go straight to court instead, would that mean the resolution of the right of way or the street would be done faster?
The fastest, most efficient and most cost-effective way to get the county's rights of way back is if the developer actually performs and completes the work. Litigation is an alternative, of course, but that takes a lot of time. With all due respect, the judicial process, the courts, there, there are a lot of cases pending and we would be entering the queue.
Have we, you mentioned Public Works, talking about a timeline of when they expect work to be done. When, if they sign the agreement and in, you said 60 days was what Public Works advised, would that be set as a limit in that agreement that the clock passes 60 days and if we don't see the physical road work done, that you go to court? Or is there more time? How can we assure citizens that we are not giving more leniency and delay?
We would envision putting that sort of a timeframe in the agreement itself, and yes, we would enforce it.
Do you need our motion to be specific to that?
You can give the direction if you'd like and be very specific if you'd like, or that's just the understood direction that we've received from the board.
Okay. And are we in a, the proposed agreement that we would approve, you to see if they would sign, does that give them any benefit or let them out of any obligations they currently have?
No, they already have an existing obligation to repair and restore the rights of way that they utilize for their project. Those obligations existed under the license agreement that has since been terminated, and they've been well aware of these obligations for a long time.
Thank you. So the reason I support staff recommendation to, to see if they'll meet the agreement is the, the information we just got, that it is the most likely practical solution to have the quickest resolution to making our county streets safe there and gives us the ability, we're continuing to pursue the cost from the developer and owner. I came in expecting to say, I don't know, you know, they've waited seven years. I don't know why we don't just sue them for their, you know, current obligations, but the way you've laid it out makes sense. And as much as I love the opportunity to drop the hammer on someone who needs to, you know, meet their obligation, this clearly looks like the most practical and expeditious option. So that's why I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioners, any other discussion? I don't see any. We've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe and a second from Commissioner Minor. I will support the motion as well. Commissioner O'Keefe, I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. Kind of escaped our minds, aye, for a while, and you brought it back up, and I think it's an important one. Was there somebody else that wanted to?
No, I thought I saw Commissioner Minor.
Commissioner Minor is the second of the motion. You good? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I like that. That was a firm aye on across the board. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, can you record my vote?
In the affirmative?
In the affirmative for the-
Cross-country.
Thank you.
Please record Commissioner O'Keefe and the affirmative on the previous vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Form me an affirmative on consent, please. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Administrator, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item, item number 16, seeks your, or provides a status update on the implementation of our ongoing efforts to the Lake Munson Action Plan approved by the board in October of '22 and modified in March of '23. In a moment, you'll hear from Anna Padilla, who will come to the podium and provide the board with an update on the action plan, including notable findings and achievements. As a reminder, Commissioners, in April 2024, the board directed that this Lake Munson Action Plan update be provided one year after the conclusion of the drawdown. Since April of '24, and that update to the board, the drawdown concluded on May 17 of 2024, and the lake has refilled. Our enhanced monitoring during the drawdown transition to a post-drawdown water quality study, which Anna will cover in her update. We've continued the invasive exotic vegetation management program, as well as all of the other aspects of the action plan. Staff continues to engage with the Science Advisory Committee, State Agency Partners and others, and Anna's update will highlight the progress made to date on the ongoing efforts, again, related to the action plan. We're happy to answer any questions. We're recommending option one. And, Mr. Chairman, we do have several speaker cards on this item, but you may wish to hear from Anna first.
Anna, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
I'm happy to be here tonight to provide you a status update on Lake Munson. The Lake Munson Plan, as Mr. County Administrator mentioned, was adopted by the board in October of 2022 and modified in March of 2023. It builds on the decades of the significant investment in upstream improvements and it's, which have greatly improved the water quality entering Lake Munson. The plan takes a holistic approach to lake management through the drawdown, enhanced monitoring and long-term strategies based on best management practices. It's aimed at improving the entire ecosystem with continued water quality improvements while supporting native, diverse and well-balanced plant and animal communities. And today, I'm happy to share some of the key achievements of the action plan and provide you with an update on our implementation. County staff and coordination with state agency partners are continuously monitoring the lake and evaluating its progress. This evaluation identified several key achievements stemming from the action plan, and I'll highlight a few for you today. The drawdown provided several benefits, including the mitigation of the rapidly growing invasive exotic vegetation and the algal blooms from 2002. Another benefit was the sediment compaction. And while higher water levels in the lake through the winter limited that amount of compaction, there were other benefits, which was creating a cycle of the water hyacinths growing in the lake and then dying off, effectively using up some of the seed bank. We've also seen invasive exotic vegetation control, the re-establishment of native aquatic vegetation and abundant wildlife, all of which I'll talk about more in detail. Overall, the data obtained through the action plan's enhanced monitoring and lake observations indicate continued ecosystem improvements, which we anticipate to continue going forward. During the drawdown, the water quality flowing into and out of Lake Munson was monitored through monthly water quality sampling. Broadly speaking, these sample results indicate that the lake bottom and sediments compacted, and the system proved more stable as the drawdown progressed, and a detailed discussion is provided in your agenda item. Throughout the drawdown, the nitrogen and phosphorus concentrations in Munson slough, both upstream and downstream of the lake, they remained better than or at the state's The aerial topographic surveys were collected at the beginning of the drawdown, and we were able to pick up three quarterly samples in 2023. But again, due to those high water levels, we weren't able to collect any quarterly samples in 2024 or a final, final flight. So while no direct comparison can be made between the beginning and the end, the data that we did obtain suggests that there was sediment compaction, especially around the edges that were drier more frequently. As mentioned, in May of last year, the drawdown concluded and the lake was slowly refilled. And then we transitioned to the post-drawdown water quality study. So we're about halfway through this two-year study, monitoring the water quality upstream of Lake Henrietta, upstream of Lake Munson and downstream of Lake Munson. We're doing monthly water quality samples. Overall, since the drawdown ended, nutrient concentrations, again, they've remained around the TMDL for the slough, and the results indicate that the, the system continues to stabilize and improve. And the item discusses in more detail, but there was some variability in nutrient concentrations, again, right around the TMDL line. But those, that variability was expected. The ecosystem is stabilizing and just following that continual state of transition with the drawdown. In addition, one of the major factors with the variability is the invasive exotic vegetation treatment. So when the vegetation dies off following a treatment, it can release nutrients back into the water. Given these variables, the water quality is best understood looking at the overall trends rather than focusing on individual sample results. Furthermore, if you recall, the goal is not only just that water quality meeting state standards, but also the balanced native plant and animal community. So to achieve that goal of the balanced native diverse plant community, we need to help the native vegetation grow by treating the invasive exotic vegetation. So beginning last spring, the county has been treating invasive exotic vegetation in Lake Munson, upstream through the slough and in Lake Henrietta. So the drawdown was very effective at getting rid of the hydrilla, which was the problem in 2022. Now the predominant species is water hyacinth. The hyacinth is fast-growing and it forms mats that float on the water surface. And because it floats, it can get pushed around the lake by the wind or the current, and it all ends up on the east side of the lake or near the dam. We're very pleased so far with the progress of the treatments. They've been very effective at not only stopping the spread, but reducing the areas of the coverage through the lake. So as you can see on this slide, the difference in size on the left from a treatment after refill of the lake last summer compared to the right photo, which shows the spring, treatment this spring. And as you can see, the coverage in the lake is reduced, and what does grow is moved over to the east side, which is where the boat landing is in the outfall of the dam, and which is also where our treatments are happening. So with that native vegetation program and the slow refill of the lake, that aided in the growth of native vegetation. So last summer, we're very excited to see these native water lilies that grew up in the middle of the lake. As you recall, we've talked in other items about the seed bank and the importance of the seed bank, and these native water lilies are a great example of that. They grew from the seeds and the sediment all on their own. And as we continue to treat the lake for the invasive exotic vegetation, the lake will have more opportunities for this native vegetation to fill in. So another really exciting thing is snail kites, the pears snail kites that have been observed on Lake Munson. These unique raptors are federally endangered species, and they feed almost exclusively on apple snails. The presence of the birds is very exciting because most, the range in the U.S. has typically been in South Florida, so I don't, they may be the first, or they're very rarely seen up here if they have been before. So two weeks ago, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service was out on the lake. They identified the pear's nest and began monitoring three juvenile birds in the nest. So staff continue to coordinate with FWC regarding the birds and our activities on the lake. Looking ahead, staff will continue to monitor the system through the final year of the post-drawdown water quality study. The invasive exotic vegetation management will continue, which supplements the state's program in coordination with FWC. We'll continue to explore those innovative technologies and coordinate with state agency partners, the Science Advisory Committee and other interested parties. Through the previous investments and the implementation of the action plan so far, we're well on the way to improving and protecting the entire ecosystem with continued water quality improvements, supporting that native and diverse system and meeting the state's requirement for water quality and a balanced plant and animal community. Based on these achievements and the progress so far, staff recommendation is the continued implementation of the action plan as approved by the board, with the next update brought back in one year. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Mr. Administrator, we have speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do, let me just say too, with that, with Anna, there's a tremendous amount of work and focus and coordination, obviously, that you can see here, Commissioners, that continues. We're never done. That work will continue. You do have four speaker cards, and again, staff will be happy to address any specific issues or, or concerns following the speakers. The first speaker is John Gibby.
Mr. Gibby, right there. Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes. He'll take care of that for you, Mr. Gibby. Just step to the podium.
John Gibby, 4887 Gum Road. Good afternoon. Wow, I lived in a converted school bus with a lake view and a smell- Wow, I lived in a converted school bus with a lake view and a smell view on Lake Munson way back when. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to also thank all the persons involved, which was a lot. I was going over my Lake Munson files, and I found this gem. I did not create this, but it appears we may be able to modify this slightly, some modifications. Maybe the removal of the gas mask is possible. We might have to add an apple snail or two to the side of the boat. The Lake Munson mineral water that I delivered to the commission at that time might be a little less murky right now. The county has taken many actions to improve the water quality and spent an awful lot of money. We have decades left of work to do, however. Thank you again for your attention. Please do not forget about Lake Munson. What we do at the garbage transfer station adjacent to Gum Swamp, which is upstream, has real impacts on Lake Munson. Best regards, and I continue to look forward to monitor the lake's improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Gibby.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, Max Epstein, to be followed by Linda Rivers.
Mr. Epstein, name and address for the record, please.
Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. So here we are, a year later, and we'd like you all to follow through on your discussions last year of holding a workshop with all those state agencies, FWC, DEP, the SAC, every one in one room so we can discuss things, because often what we hear from FWC or DEP is completely different than what we hear from the county. We'd like to get into a room and discuss this all. That's our number-one ask. If you look at the enhanced water quality, a few things to go over, the water quality has not improved. This is above Lake Munson, Munson slough coming in. You can see this enhanced drawdown, which is beautiful, this enhanced monitoring. We have more data. It's showing a clear uptrend in the nutrient concentrations for both the phosphorus and the nitrogen. So why there isn't an average line in there, I'm not sure, but it is definitely higher than it was in the last six, seven years, and it is probably approaching that TMDL line again. This is post-drawdown. Here, you can see the nitrogen. This is the only sample that is tightly clustered together. This is pretty accurate and shows that, yes, we are below that line. And you can see the phosphorus below is wild sometimes, and that's up, too. Now, if we look at the lake itself, for some reason, that enhanced monitoring wasn't done in the lake. We only have four water quality samples. Here, nitrogen is below the line, phosphorus still above. You're not meeting the state standards for water quality, nor will you ever meet the state standards for water quality until you deal with what's in the sediment. And you remember, you did this enhanced drawdown. You left those gates open during one of the rainiest years of recorded history. You left those gates down, and that lake was pretty much full that entire year. All of the benefits that we got were pre that extension of the drawdown, because it was wet the whole time. And we know from other facts that that contaminated sediment went through that channel and was flushed downstream. So we're here. We'd like to get all on the same page. What the data is showing is that it's not working, that we're trending up. We had almost $2 million canceled from the Trump administration. We couldn't talk about it until now, until it was canceled. We got the paperwork. It would have had an enhanced water quality study, an epidemiological study, everything that we've asked you here for. The EPA recommended we get funding for, and then Trump canceled it because it said disadvantaged community in the grant. So if you would give me one more minute, maybe I can take it from Nita here, but we haven't really had any communication from county staff over the last two years. FWC hasn't. We found out they came and chopped up all this vegetation that was growing. Remember, over a year ago, I asked you, do you harvest it, actually remove it? You heard about how when they spray it, it dies, it goes to the bottom, and contributes to the problem. So that's what happened with FWC. They chopped up all that stuff. Someone actually did something about it. Great to FWC. They didn't actually harvest it. You all had the opportunity to do that. So the two management techniques you have for these is actually contributing to it.
Mr. Epstein, please wrap up.
Thank you, sir. We met with staff. The staff confirmed that the city caused tens of thousands of dollars in damage to the water lines. They said, city won't do, they won't do anything because it's the city. And we have seen lots of contractor issues, from illegal airboat to them spraying on windy days. So what's the takeaway? Hold the workshop. Let's do it. Get us all on the same page.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Next speaker.
Linda Rivers, to be followed by our final speaker on this item, Nita Davis.
Ms. Rivers, name and address for the record, please.
Linda Rivers, 5312 Trinidad Drive, on the lake. I had prepared a lot of things I was going to say, but some of these things have been covered, so I just want to say that first, we all need to be on the same page. The residents feel, and I'm going to speak for the residents, because we have meetings down there. Why don't people vote? Because they don't think they're ever listened to. We're talking of 50-plus years of neglect to this lake. Commissioners that were here way before you guys, okay? Not a phone call. Since I've been involved, we picked up the mantle from Margaret Fogg, who fought for years and died of cancer. We have cancer clusters on our lake. All you have to do is go down there to Lake Munson and look at it. How many of you have been there and actually looked at it? You can't put a boat through there. It smells. You go to the slough, and it stinks so bad you can't stay there, where people used to fish. Or even our dogs get rashes, okay? There's something really wrong. And if you're so adamant, and you believe staff, and you believe what you have, what you hear, what is the big deal? And what is the fear of having a workshop where everybody gets to speak? We residents, on the windiest day of the year, had an airboat out there spraying god knows what, because we could never get to the bottom of that, on the windiest day of the year. That's just one thing. There are so many things. We need this workshop, and if you want people to believe in government, do something about it. Don't run on promises and come into our homes and make your political ads, Christian, in our living room, and then not even return phone calls.
Ma'am, please don't direct your comments at specific commissioners.
Okay, well, that's what happened. And we have met with all of you. We've met in your offices. We've gone to SAC meetings. We've sent emails. We've sent letters. We've pleaded. We need this workshop, and you all should vote for it, and if you don't, shame on you.
Next speaker, please.
Final speaker on this item, Nita Davis.
Ms. Davis, name and address for the record, please.
Nita Davis, 1111 East Paul Russell Road. I'm speaking on Lake Munson. I'm older than all of you up there, not combined, but older than all of you. My memories of that lake go back to the '40s. I have the millstone in my backyard. I have the bricks from the original house up there that the Moody's lived in. We owned, at one time, where the dam, okay? We owned the whole spillway. We didn't call it a slough because people fished on it. It wasn't some nasty slough. It was a spillway from the lake. We owned all where the park is. My grandma lived up there. She had a fish camp. All people made a living off that lake. People ate off that lake. People ground their corn off that lake. I remember when that lake was an asset, and you guys are all in about putting money in to the county to make money back. Well, you're really not, you're so young. You all have a certain image and mindset on Lake Munson. That's a lot of the problem. I have been on other boards, and I have always, always had workshops. And why you guys have been so stubborn about this whole thing, I mean, I'm really saying there's something, there's something amiss, okay? And just like why we didn't get that grant because of DEI, because it's on the south side and it's about minorities, is that why you guys aren't granting us? Because in your mind, you have this image of Lake Munson, because y'all are young. You don't have the history. You don't have the memory. It's like muscle memory. You just came in a later date, way late in my life. And, you know, they're spraying out there, god knows what. They don't let the residents know. Then they go out there, and they're chopping up hyacinths, and instead of harvesting, they're letting them rot and go to the bottom. I took my daughter out there a couple days, literally on Sunday, no, Saturday, and we walked out, because, you know, nostalgia, where we used to go when grandma was there, walked out to the dam. We had to literally put our t-shirts up over our nose. Those pictures that you were shown, I don't know where they're taken. I wish I would have brought my pictures. That dam and that spillway, it's so choked up. It's choked up all the way back to the lake, okay? Those hyacinths, that whole lake is matted because y'all left that, you left it up, you didn't close it with the rain, it filled up, and then you opened it, and then you let that drawdown come, and then you left the drawdown too long, where all this vegetation, where it was like turning into a forest of a wetland. I mean, you guys did it all wrong. I'm not a scientist, but I can tell you, you did it wrong. I'm out there. I'm seeing it all the time, and I'm seeing what the citizens and the people on that lake are suffering. Now, if this was on some other lake, let's just say Lake Hall or any other lakes, this wouldn't be happening. I'm sorry, I'm calling it for what it is, and y'all know this, because in your heart, you know it's wrong. And you talk, and there's money that could be made on that lake. Or you can, it could be like it used to be, one of the prime fishing lakes in the county or even in North Florida. The size of that lake, it's immense. It's one of the most beautiful, it is the most beautiful lake that we have in this county, and I challenge any of you to dispute that. And it's on your watch that you're like kicking this can. And we're not going away, just to let you know. Unless they take me out feet first, I'm going to be here, and I'm going to be there on watch, because this is wrong, you know? And I'm really happy for all these people coming in and out of town. Just don't send them over to the lake. I'm serious. You don't want them to smell that in your backyard. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, commissioners, we're in discussion. Commissioner Proctor, you're in the queue, followed by Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Coman.
I wanted to ask staff, because I was startled that staff was aware that the Everglade small kite ate mostly apple snails. Where do you learn that from?
Yes, go ahead, Anna.
I learned it from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service just two weeks ago. But other staff were aware of the snail kites and knew about it, so.
That was, I mean, among the things, serious, that you knew what that bird ate mostly was just blew me away. Thank you very much. On last year, when we discussed this matter, I believe that we were, Commissioner Coman's influence on this persuaded our board to walk with staff, to give the time to do the additional things which our staff and the Florida, the EP, somebody like that, wanted to implement.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Proctor, we need a motion, if you don't mind.
Okay, what are the options?
Option one, staff recommendation.
I would make the staff recommendation consistent with adding a sit-down meeting with the Florida Fish and Wildlife and DEP and the parties that have been asked for a workshop. Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Proctor, second by Commissioner O'Keefe. Go ahead, Commissioner Proctor.
Let me just say that I continue to believe I'm no less resilient or committed to desire that we, as the county's government for citizens around Lake Munson, they want to meet with leaders and agencies of state government. Those agencies often, here in the free state of Florida, often feel that they may not have to meet with citizens, in particular those on the south side of Leon County. As the representatives for these citizens, they again come to us desiring that we secure a meeting that they can lay their science, their data, their perceptions, as well as the 50- and 60-year, two, three generations of observations on that lake, to put their views side by side on the screen with what the regulators from the state of Florida are imposing, are limiting. Are there other methodologies to heal the lake, to make it better? What is the goal? What is the optimal expectation? Is a stank water body that looks good away from it on a pitcher the optimal hope that we have? And I just think that among the meetings that I've been to over the last year, they asked last year to meet, I'll make time to sit down with the state, but I do know that getting the state to come to the table in the free state of Florida is hard. I can't meet with certain factions of the state. I'm elected, constitutional officer, in fact, been elected a couple times. Say the Pledge of Allegiance, they're not there. If I can't meet with them, many of these people won't either. But again, commissioners, let me just land by saying, I'm not intimidated to hear the science, the data, as well as the historic observations of time observed for decades that this community has with the state, and I trust that they have their power points, and let's hear the science debate agreement, and maybe together, these, our regulatory bodies can concur with the input of the community and that we're, in the sense that we're indifferent, aloof, and we gave them, we told them last year, Commissioner Coman, that we didn't want to talk with them until a year or two passed. I just think that there's nobody in Tallahassee that we just mandate to stay away from us, and we don't want to talk to y'all till a year or two, whatever the quarantine period or parole. Let's take these people off parole. Let's give them an opportunity to sit down with us in the style of a workshop and allow them participatory voice. I just sincerely believe that. I ain't got no emotions about it. It's just that my convictions in a democratic society run deep that citizens who are, and Commissioner Cummings and I have been there and have seen their presentations and heard from their scientists, these ain't ranky-danky-minded, nilly-willy folk. These folk have got serious science, major biologists and words you can't pronounce. They got all of that. So that's my motion, and I ask you all support.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox, you're up.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This issue goes back a while, and it really is centered around a difference in the philosophy of whether or whether or not to dredge. And I would imagine any workshop we have is going to center around that conversation. Should we dredge? Should we not dredge? And quite frankly, it's going to end up the same way it always ends up, where the citizens are saying that they have scientists and reporters to say we should dredge, and then there's their staff and other entities saying that it's not in our best interest to dredge. And then we'll be left to make a decision about whether or not we do it. If you allow me, Ms. Chair, I have a couple of questions for staff.
Sure. Anna, you're one.
Summer 2022, Lake Munson experienced a minor ecological Summer 2022 Lake Munson experienced a minor ecological setback despite measurable improvements in water quality, as you stated, for the reasons you stated, extremely warm weather, correct? But what I'm reading here, that action plan was actually developed and guided by industry-best practices and shaped by input from state agencies, partners, contracted environmental and engineer experts, and local shareholders. Are any of those local shareholders sitting in here that was a part of that 2022 plan?
There were some that were involved in the process.
Absolutely. I remember when we originally had the conversation about it, there was a big conversation about moving forward. And I believe, I think I might have had something to do with us saying that we need to sit down with those stakeholders, mainly the ones that are sitting here today, and we need to have a conversation around how we come from, how we meet in the middle, because I don't believe that I'm right all the time and I don't believe that they're right all the time, but I believe somewhere in the middle of there, we should be able to meet and come up with some, some, some good compromises that will get us to where we're trying to go. And that is what happened in summer 2022, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so we started this plan in summer 2022. I was talking to staff.
Ma'am, please.
We started this plan in summer 2022. And so we've had, what, a couple, maybe three years? And in those three years, I heard you say that the water quality is improving, or no?
It is improving, correct. It's trending downwards, or appears to be trending downwards.
And as, as I understand it, the plan that we have is one that's not going to work over just a couple of years. This is a long-term plan. I mean, we could be working on this for the next five, 10 years and still not be exactly where we're trying to get to, but working towards it. How, how long is the plan that was, that we started implementing in 2022?
It's, it's open-ended, really. It's got, enhanced monitoring had a finite timeline and, you know, we're doing the post-drawdown study for two years, but if you remember, it also included those routine drawdowns every five to 10 years.
Every five.
Continued coordination, so it.
If I'm remembering correctly, too, back to us originally having those conversations, one of the, one of the big gripes I had, it wasn't really a gripe, it was terminology. Okay? What water body feeds directly into Lake Munson?
Lake Henrietta.
Okay, Lake Henrietta. And what, what feeds into Lake Henrietta?
Munson Slough.
Munson Slough. All right. And the question I had was, is there any freshwater bodies that feed into either Lake Henrietta, Munson Slough, or, or Lake Munson?
I mean, upstream, you've got various lakes that are around. You've got Gum Swamp, you've got behind the lows on Capital Circle Northwest, all of that, those wetland areas all go down to Lake Munson.
I think what we're dealing with here is a body of water that is going to take us a long time to rehab, that really never really had a chance for a while, because we are trying to fix, how many years of damage? How many, how many years of, of, I would say, damage are we trying to deal with here?
Seventy, eighty?
Seventy, eighty years?
Yeah.
So seventy, eighty years of, of, of damage that we're trying to fix, that quite possibly could take 20 years to do so. But we got a plan to do it. How much money has been invested into Lake Munson?
Hundreds of millions of dollars in upstream improvements, over 291 million. All of that upstream improved the water quality coming in. We've also invested money through the invasive exotic management plan, through all of our sampling and enhanced monitoring as part of the drawdown that we're doing right now.
And why have, why was a decision made not to dredge, as a reminder?
It would cause more harm than good, lots of reasons. You've got habitat destruction, you've got that native seed bank, if you remember the water lilies that came up, all of that is gone. You take away the native seed bank, you're left with a lake full of invasive exotic vegetation. There's a concern for opening up a karst feature or a sinkhole in the middle of the lake, and I think I said habitat destruction as well.
And so when you, when you sat down, because that was a conversation that, that we were talking about in 2022, when you sat down with the, with the stakeholders that are here and some that are not, when we talked about the dredging in 2022, what was the, do you remember some of the compromises that were, that were made that, I think back at, back at the time, I don't, I don't think you all were totally on board with everything, but you did feel good about the fact that, that the county and staff made some compromises there. And so do you, you remember some of the compromises that were made?
Yeah, we did some additional sampling. We did that point source testing that was looking at the metals and the contaminants, found that they're not in the water qual, column, they're heavily locked in that sediment. We added the algal bloom management program. Happy to say that we didn't have to use it since we've refilled the lake, but our contractor is on standby and prepared, should coming into the summer, we have an algal bloom to promptly go out and treat that algal bloom. That was one of the things that the work group had requested.
Okay. And so, again, commissioners, I think we hold a workshop and we have all of our stake, oh, the stakeholders who, who, the agencies who helped us come up with this plan, what agencies were those?
We spoke to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Fish and Wildlife Conservation.
Is there any agencies that, that were inspiring to come to this workshop that we didn't speak to?
I can't think, I mean, those would be the ones that we would invite to the table.
Have we, have we talked to those agencies about the progress of the plan and gotten any input from those agencies?
Frequently, we keep them updated. For a while, when we were having the drawdown, we had routine calls with, with FWC, we keep D.E.P. involved, they get all of our water quality data. Now, when we communicate with FWC, it's telephone calls with specific people, but we do send an email out to the broader FWC group.
And what kind of correspondence are you getting back from those agencies on the progress of our plan, if any?
They all think we're on the right track. And if I may, I spoke to a, a local engineering firm who is not a contractor of the city just the other day about a different project, and they said, hey, I happen to be out at Munson Slough downstream of the lake, and the slough actually looks better than I've ever seen it before, so.
So, if we have the conversation and dredging does come up, has there any, has there been anything or any opinions or any thoughts or any education or, or anything that has happened that would indicate that dredging would be the way to move? Matter of fact, I also remember that when we were talking about, we're having a conversation about dredging, there was another, there was another point that was made that there wasn't much, if, if that, if the sediment was disturbed and it would flow, there wasn't enough water feeding in and out to stabilize it, correct?
There's a real concern with dredging that you could, when you dredge, you're going to kick up a bunch of that sediment, cause the water to be very turbid, have all that sediment suspended in it, and send a lot of that downstream.
Has any of that science, has anything changed in the way of dredging since we had that initial conversation?
It has not.
So, look, here's the thing, I, I've been here for, for all of the conversation. I have been the one who have sat here and asked over and over again to staff to sit down with, with our stakeholders and have conversations around how we actually get this done and meet in the middle. And staff, to their credit, has made some concessions in such, and one of which, what you talked about was the, was the, was the testing and, and other things. And now we sit here and we're, we're hearing staff say that the water quality is improving on a 70 and 80, 70 or 80-year problem, and that, and that we've sent regular updates to the same people that we're going to ask to come here and sit during a workshop, and they have said that they are proud, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but, but they are happy with the direction that we're moving in and see the improvement that's, that's going on there and agree with the way that we're handling it. And during that workshop, I'm imagining that there's going to be some argument that we could be doing something different. We've invested 291 million dollars and I, I just, I don't want to have a workshop for the sake of saying we had a workshop with a group of folks who are going to tell us that we're doing a good job of what they asked us to do, and not talk about the real issue that's going to come up as a result of the workshop. And I think we're all talking around it. We all know that this is about dredging. This is, this is, this ain't about, about the plan. This ain't about if there's improvement, because we've established there's, there's improvement. We have emails from, from, from staff to these agents that we're going to meet saying there's improvement. We have confirmation from them coming back to us if there's improvement. This is about whether or not we're going to dredge. And nothing about dredging has changed since we had that conversation. And so, I, I don't, I don't believe in, in, in sitting here and having a conversation around something without talking about what it's really about. And so, let's call a spade a spade. We're going to have a workshop to talk about dredging. We're not having a workshop to talk about this plan. We're not having a workshop to talk about the improvement. We're going to have a workshop to talk about dredging, unless somebody's lying to me, because I just heard that these agencies that were asking to come meet with us have said something different than what staff is saying, but I would imagine that you have some record of what they're saying to you, correct?
We've talked to them. I don't have an email that says we're on the right track, but we have conversations.
Mr. Chair, this is a very, very complicated issue. And I think, I do believe that, I, I believe that there has been some improvement. And commissioners, I don't, I don't for one second believe that we're going to fix a 70 or 80-year problem within two and a half years. This is something that commissioners far after us, ma'am, 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 ma'am? I know, ma'am, but I believe that, that commissioners far after us will have to deal with this issue. This ain't just something that this commission is going to have to deal with. This is something that commissioners 20, 30 years from now are going to look at the steps that we're taking now and say that we took the right steps to move in the right direction. Mr. Gibby, I appreciate your graphic, but it looked like it came from a while ago. And that was part of that 70 or 80 years, that part of 70, 80 years that we were, that we were trying to figure out what to do with that 291 million dollars that's been invested. I don't, I don't, we, everybody's asked for the workshop. We want to have a workshop, I ain't got no problem with it, but I'll tell you, as I sit here right now, I'm not voting for dredging until I know that the science around it makes sense so that everything's not flying downstream. Now, if there's a better way to do it, there's a better way to do it. And if, if I need to sit here, if I need, if you all want to sit here and have them tell me, tell us, have our partners tell us that we're doing the right thing, then so be it. I'm not, I'm not going to push away from it, but I, I don't, I don't want us to, to incense something and make promises about what we can do here or what this lake can look like in a couple of years or in a few years, when we know if it took 70 or 80 years for it to get there, it's going to take at least 10 to 15 to 20 for it to get back where it was. And so, I appreciate the citizens that we had come here today, and as you guys know, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know how you feel about me, but at the end of the day, when I came and saw you, I came back here and I had the conversation, and I have followed every, every step of the way to make sure that your input was taken by staff. And even in that way, some of the compromises that you've asked for has been given to you by staff. And so I just, for me, I just want to make sure that we understand that there's a couple of things that I'm looking at. One, how is the plan doing thus far? The answer to that question is, the water quality is improving and that our partners agree with that. Number two, has there any science or anything changed when it came to the issue of dredging? The answer is, no, there's not, and we still believe the same things we believed in the past. Number three, how long will it really take us to deal with these issues? Answer is, there's no way this is going to be a short-term fix. This is going to be a long-term, 10 to 15-year, maybe even 20 years or more fix, because we're dealing with 70 and 80 years of non-activity that we've needed to do things to this lake. And so, for that reason, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm really in a place where I'm undecided about the workshop, but I don't, I don't really see, I don't really see where that workshop gets us any place that we aren't already. Unless, again, where staff is telling me one thing that's not true, and then I'm going to get those folks sitting here telling me, telling me that there's a different way for us to deal with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got Commissioner Caban, Commissioner O'Keefe, and then Commissioner Proctor in the queue. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm waiting on, just last minute, I asked staff to print a document, and so I do want to put it up there, but, so I asked for a little bit of patience. In the meantime, I'll go through some stuff I have. I have a couple of questions for staff, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
My first question, I guess, is to Anna. When was the last time we had algae blooms?
What was the question?
When was the last time that we had any algae blooms at the lake?
The last algal bloom on the lake was the summer of 2022, which was when we implemented the action plan.
And so, so far, last summer in 2024, and then I know, I know we just kind of started summer, but we've had some warm weather, we've had no sign of any algae blooms thus far.
That's correct.
I, I want to ask a question about the nutrients. From the, from the graphs and what I'm seeing, you know, upstream and downstream, we're seeing the nitrogen levels consistently be under the state, the state mandated TMDLs. And then with phosphorus, we're seeing, we're not quite there yet, but the trend line is trending down.
That's correct.
Okay. My next question is about, I guess Commissioner Maddox hit on this, so I don't want to be redundant, but how involved are we with working with FWC and D.E.P. and those state agencies that we would, you know, theoretically be asking to come work with us in a workshop? Like, how, how involved are they already?
We talked to FWC, the invasive plant, folks at FWC, we talk to them weekly, every other week. The rest of the folks, we engage with them every few months. D.E.P.'s a little, not quite as frequently, probably every six months or so, I would say. But they, you know, they get all our data and they have all our data.
Okay, thank you. I mean, this question's probably for the county administrator. Mr. County Administrator, you know, earlier there was a claim about, I would say, equity in regards to Lake Munson and other lakes. Would it be fair to assume that we've spent more money on Lake Munson over the last 20 years and, or indirectly or directly benefiting Lake Munson than any other lake in Leon County? Would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, I think in particular, when you talk about the upstream improvements that we've made, I think, I'd be hard-pressed to argue that point unless, and unless you have any other information.
I mean, certainly if you look at the upstream improvements, that is by far the biggest investment. I would say even in lake improvements, very few lakes, if any, around the county do we invest in.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, I don't recall if it was 2024 or 2023, but I sat here and I said, if I wanted to give staff an opportunity to be successful, I said, you know, our office goal is for the water quality in the lake to improve. I've never stated that I believe, since having the full information as an elected official, that dredging is the way to go. And what I'm seeing now from, from these data points is that what staff doing, what staff is doing is improving. And I want to thank county staff for the extensive and technical, you know, informed work they've done over the past several years, particularly for Lake Munson. I understand, like, this is not going to be a one-step fix and it's a multi-phase environmental restoration, it's going to take time. But when we look at the data and what the science-based progress we are seeing, nitrogen levels are already down, phosphorus levels are trending down. The Lake Munson drawdown, which started in November 2022 and concluded in May 24, has been, I mean, central to this effort. We've seen the sediment dry and form a natural cap. I saw that with you in person, Anna. You know, Commissioner Maddox, we talked about dredging and, you know, the, the feedback we have from dredging from our staff and other state agencies is that this has the potential to do more harm than good, with natural aquifers and Waculla Springs right down just south of us. You know, it could be catastrophic to Waculla Springs if we were to disturb the compacted sediment in Lake Munson. And I want to talk about briefly, you know, we, we asked and advocated for monthly chemistry water testing in Lake Munson and Munson Slough. We asked for aerial topographic surveys to assess the lake bottoms. As the lake refilled, staff continued monthly sampling for two years at multiple locations, upstream and downstream and in the lake. They also performed point source contaminant testing to confirm and validate previous sediment studies. Now, beyond monitoring, I'm going to echo some of the sentiments that staff said. And I just was at, I went and personally went and visited the lake in preparation for this agenda item. Invasive vegetation management program to support FWC efforts, our staff is doing that. In case we do get an algae bloom, we have a dedicated algae bloom management program that came from the direction of our office a couple of years ago. And now we have scheduled planned routine drawdowns every five to 10 years based on where we think the, the natural body of the lake currently sits. You know, and I also want to just take a moment to, and I usually don't do this, but address some of the claims because I take some of those seriously. Our office has been committed and will be steadfast and committed to cleaning up Lake Munson. And we did work very closely with neighbors on this game plan. And in fact, can we put that, just the front slide up, please? Mr. Cavell? So that, that's, that's probably fine, just as long as folks can see it. And so, thank you, Mr. Cavell. So, so what this is, in spring 2023, this, the drawdown recommendation, partnership with our office came with working with some of our neighbors directly from Lake Munson. Sean McGlen, I believe, has spent some of his whole professional career working on Lake Munson. And Anna, just from a quick glance of that, how many of those things have we, have we done already over the last few years? I know we, we did the drawdown, we monitored water quality monthly, we did the aerial topographic survey, we developed an emergency plan to close the dam during flooding events. I, I mean...
That's correct. We've done most of them.
Okay. And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's an unfair claim to say that our office hasn't been working directly with our neighbors on Lake Munson because that plan came from working with our neighbors at Lake Munson and staff implemented it in the Lake Munson action plan. I think, I just, I just wanted to point that out because it's very important for us. Additionally, our office continues to work with neighbors around Lake Munson, and a lot of folks are happy with the results that they're seeing. We've seen, I've heard just recently of folks fishing in Lake Munson and catching fish. They stated to us, they've never seen the water quality as clean as it's been over the last 20 years. And so, you know, again, I just give the kudos to staff for putting in the effort and sticking to the game plan. I will close by saying, I don't believe that this will be solved overnight. You know, I believe that this can take continued planning, execution, and transparency. And we know what we have to do and we're currently doing it. And I really just want to thank, you know, my fellow Commissioners, community members, and for staying engaged and passionate, whether we agree or disagree, I do appreciate the passion behind Lake Munson. And I strongly, Commissioners, I, I am not going to vote for a workshop solely because I think we are headed in the right direction. I think we are working already with some of these state agencies. But, you know, I don't, I don't shame the spirit. I think we just have different approaches of how we want to see this lake be cleaned up. And I guess, I am currently, the Vice Chair, since the chair is out of the chamber. So who's next in queue?
I'll take it if you want me to, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Proctor?
I think I was in it before you, and if you go, I'll never go.
Well, if you go, then it probably won't be left else for me to say, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I do want to start by thanking staff, Anna, and, and everyone involved for your work on this. I know we have put a lot of money and a lot of work into this, and I know that every staff member here wants to see this improve and wants to continue to see this improved. So I want to be clear about that. The, and to acknowledge that real progress is being made, as we've heard from citizens and as we've seen in data. And so, so my questions really, and my, my second for this workshop come from hearing from what we've heard from residents today, and I just want to make sure we don't brush that aside. We, we heard about people talking about odors so foul you couldn't be around them, skin rashes, pets getting sick, and even concerns about cancer clusters. And so, those are kind of the things I want to ask about and find out about. And then, and, and my issue really isn't about how we do it, or whether we're doing enough or not, or how long it's going to take, or even dredge or not to dredge. My issue is about making sure that when we have neighbors and citizens saying that these health effects are impacting them, that we are finding out about them and dealing with them. In fact, I'm curious, you know, if it's about dredging, in an imaginary world where we just decided today we're going to dredge, would a workshop be necessary? That's just a question, that's something that I think is important for us to think about, to Commissioner Maddox's point. Because, you know, my support and my questions for a workshop are these, these health impacts. And so I do have some questions. Are we tracking or aware of incidences of these health impacts people are seeing? And aware of any investigation by DOH about rashes and sickness and cancer clusters?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I could take a crack at it. First of all, I think we got to be, and you won't find staff, if, if we did have evidence of that, we certainly would be presenting it. And we don't sort of throw those types of claims around or add credence to them lightly. That's, those are very serious issues that, that should be dealt with like that. We have had the Health Department engaged on claims that citizens have made in the past where there was some surveillance done, and I'd have to probably defer to you on, on some of that, but I'm not sure anything came of that. I think those were, those were pretty sort of quickly dealt with in the past. And again, I just have a vague recollection of some of that, but we can certainly provide, but nothing that we've been able to verify.
And that's certainly what I expect of, of our staff, and I believe you would. It's just this is important. If I were experiencing those issues or coming and telling you, I've been, my neighbors have been experiencing those issues and it wasn't addressed, I'd be concerned. The, the thing that I come down to every time we get an update on this, one is, can you say we, this is being improved and it is not going to be improved overnight? And any discussion that I'm entertaining in workshop that I'm interested in is not to reevaluate or rehash or, or prior actions or, and what has improved, it's to educate what we do on forward, because this is a continual process that we're going to have to be doing for decades, which is, you know, is our responsibility. Can, either Anna or Vince, can you help me understand, we've got the science and the reports and the evidence from, from the staff, that makes sense. That makes sense to me. But we also have input from community advocates and environmental experts as well, and now we are not going to, if, if the matter comes down to fundamental difference in believing what a methodology should be, that's one thing, but if you can, help me understand where it seems like the facts are so different. I know it's hard to do that just from your perspective, but that's where I'm stuck.
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just identify sort of a, a larger dynamic that I think we're dealing with, that I've seen over my many years working on policy issues, which is you're a little bit of a victim of your own success in that when a board puts this level of emphasis on something, you may recall that when we brought this, these updates to you more frequently, there was a time when we brought these to you quarterly and biannually and that sort of thing, and, and I think monthly at one point, we, we had, we had a tremendous amount of updates provided to this board, but it sort of invites the same input when you're dealing with things, if you're monitoring things over a long period of time. And we forget, and I think it's easy to forget, the, the level of coordination and the level of, of, of input that we received throughout the process. Commissioners have noted that, Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Maddox have noted that, I think. But again, I think it's a little bit easy to forget that on every aspect of the development of the action plan, throughout all of the monitoring reports, but when we continue to provide it, these to you, because you've put such an emphasis on it, on your agenda, and now we're down yearly, well, of course, again, you would, you would invite this, and certainly we invite it. We, we, we don't mind to have, having our feet held to the fire, especially on this. We, we've got engineer, great engineers and scientists and people who really care about this, and so we don't mind that, but I think the board really should embrace the commitment that this board's demonstrated on Lake Munson because it's been extraordinary and it will continue to be so. You'll find no daylight between us and our state agency partners if that's what anyone's looking for. So as Anna said, we work with them continuously and, and we'll, we'll continue to do so. Commissioner Caban talked about the nutrients, particularly the ones that we keep a very close eye on, of where we are with respect to TMDLs. And so, again, we're making good progress there. And we, again, and as we've said all along, we'll continue to embrace new technology as, as, as things evolve and, and as we monitor things. That's something that we're committed to long-term as well, but it is long-term. And again, our commitment will, will continue throughout. So, again, we could, I could, we could probably address any specific questions that you have, but I just wanted to point out that dynamic that I think, again, you're a little bit of a victim of your own success. When you continue to have these updates on your agenda, you're going to continue to, to sort of invite this, same sort of thing, despite the fact that we've addressed most of these things time and time again.
Thank you. You know, my, I'll just say, again, I appreciate staff's work on this and the partners' work on it and the success that we have had in improving it. And my, my only interest and support in a workshop is, is, is my hope and what I think will happen is that we get everyone a room together and we hear exactly what we've been hearing. And that would allow, if anything, to me, that would allow concerned citizens who may not be actively involved in it and, and, and writing us and FWC and writing FDIP and, and to see that in public, in a public meeting, we've got FWC, we've got FDIP, and if need be, we have DOH and us, and all in, in public in one meeting, everyone's cards are on the table. And my hope, and it may be naive, and it, I would hate if it just comes down to dredge or not dredge, but I would hate that that's where we end up, because we really have seen the science on that. But anyways, that's my only intent for, for a workshop. Of course, if these other agencies are interested in coming, right, we can't compel them. So, again, thank you. And again, you know, my support for a workshop is not to say that staff is not doing well and not improving and that I don't, that I, and to confirm, I believe we continue to improve with or without a workshop, it's just to what level and how we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your second bite at it. Commissioner Cummings, after you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that in the free state of Florida, there's this idea of anti-wokeness, and there are things that we don't, we don't, we just don't. And it, it, these people ask us, can they sit down to have a meeting? And Commissioner Maddox, you know, the word dredging, to me, is not synonymous with discrimination or black, or black history, or whatever DEI represents. And that we wall off and determine that there is something that has the cooties and we just can't deal with it intellectually, cognitively, to hear what these people want to say is a very unreasonable approach to me, but I'm not either of you. I think there's room in, in, in the free state of Florida to hear from people living around Lake Munson. What, 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 what is not mentioned here is the city of Tallahassee is culprits and how much sewer actually is poured into this lake. What is not mentioned is that they're next door to all of the, everybody's business that goes down to the South Side is processed there, next door to this lake. And what is not mentioned here is how many sessions of, of, somebody mentioned about the gates being up, the gates not coming up, the gates this, this, and this, but nobody's checking how often the gates at the city sewer treatment are left down and how many, how much tonnage of raw sewer is put in this lake. Why isn't that a factor? And is it not one of the dominant reasons why this lake can't heal? But none of us here mentions the city of Tallahassee. And I guess in the anti-walk age, we're not supposed to say that. These people at DEP so scared, these people have been told that they can't say global warming. For all I know, global warming may have changed the evolutionary science and the biology of the lake. And I realize that the state workers don't want to say anything, that their masters have already told them that they cannot, ought not, they scared. Florida, fish and DEP and all of that, these folk have been given political agendas of what the boundaries of their inquiry may occur. And layering a sociological lens on top of this discussion is just a plain old general reality that, as Mrs. Anita Davis has said, the South Side citizens, though they pay taxes, in equal pro rata share to anyone else, but they just don't get their government's attention. They just don't get the same access. And I don't know if they, they just don't write big enough checks to our campaigns or, or what it is, but they get shunned, they don't get heard. I still don't see what's wrong with taking two hours, they bring in these folk, they're asking us as their government. I mean, we're not their lawyers that they paying and retaining, but they retain us. This is your district, Commissioner Caban, this ain't mine. But they retain you to come to the desk, to hold a conversation with the state and whom else. I don't care what they talk about. I don't care if they talk about dredging. I ain't going to tell these grown men and women what they can't, what I don't want to hear. I don't care what they talk about. The state gets paid from their taxes like yours and mine. But to the heart of the problem, it ain't the issue of dredging that is the great fear, in my opinion. It's just that the South Side citizens, residents, regardless of the experts you have, you're worthy of a conversation to sit down. It's just that you the South Side. I want, I want to make this a little bit more personal, that you might know my ability to empathize with you being Southsiders, and I don't know. I've been on this stairs 29 years, 29 years, and Vince, how many times I've been the chairman in 29 years?
Too many times, Commissioner Proctor. No, no.
Also, too many times, times one and two. And sometimes when you're from the wrong geographic, not even as a commissioner, do you get your turn on the desk because you're just not viewed in that way, for whatever the reasons might be. Do you pay enough taxes? Do you, is your suit matching? Is you okay looking like everybody else? Do you sit up right? I don't know. But sometimes you don't get to be the chairman of this commission, and two times in 29 years might tell you, sometimes you sit here for 10 years and your colleagues don't see you, sort of like being the invisible man. So it's not that I don't empathize with you, but I need you to know deeper, it's how we see that area of town. I was pleased to note today, thank you Vince for the memo, that we're going to get some lights on Crawfville Road, that corridor, that four lane, and work has begun, an excellent thing. I'm almost hoarse from begging and asking, on bended knee, water in my eyes, can we get some lights? And it's just, it takes 29 years to get some light bulbs on a pole. But ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to hear you. I don't, I don't know what's wrong with y'all. I don't care what y'all say, dredging, hedging, edging, whatever. I think as citizens, you pay us. You pay us. And you want to talk, and I want to... I think as citizens, you pay us. You pay us. And you want to talk, and I want to hear from you. I can't make these commissioners see you. They don't even see me. Okay? So I, I don't know how to explain it any better than to say that sometimes, you just don't get your turn to get their attention, or our attention. And I know that personally. So it's not like I can't feel you. And I wish it was different. But even for myself, I am excluded, and have been for a while. And I don't know why. But I'm just telling you the reality that's backed up by the facts. Commissioners, I wish you would give these people, my people, South Side people, a chance to talk to state leaders who they can't summon, scary ass people who scared of the governor, their representative, to say the wrong word. If we don't give cover, their voices would never filter down to these people. Some people in Tallahassee, they love the trees. And if this was a question of tree huggers and lovers, there would be no doubt about us getting the state environment to have a meeting over the trees. We had a picture up today about the aesthetics of Woodville Highway. And we don't even fuss about the aesthetics behind this building. But it's in the South Side. We've got to hold them up to a high standard of aesthetical, aesthetic brilliance, and all of that, get this property, you know, handled this. Some people love dogs in this community. They love their dogs. If this was a dog issue, we could give dog lovers a chance. But people at Lake Monson love their lake. And Ms. Davis, I know your mother, you know, you shared your story, grandmother, a long way back. And they trace their families in accordance with the relationship that they've had with the lake, be it boating, fishing, swimming, all of that, or family relations tied to that lake. It means something. This is a living soul. This is a living family member. It's just like Fido, your dog. That's what this lake means. It's emotional to them because of the memories they've had. It's like them trees that nobody want to cut down off all of these dangerous roads around here. We love these trees, trees, trees. But they love the lake. And we ought to let them talk about it. But if you don't want to let them talk about it, I can't make you commissioners do a thing, even get you commissioners to see that I could be your chairman one day, maybe in 30 years, maybe three times. So those things said, Mr. Chairman, I've said the truth, the whole truth, as I see it. And I've had 29 years to watch 21 other commissioners come to this desk and treat these people without urgency in the same manner. And we hide behind our sheets of paper, what our experts say, what the state says. And that's fine. They just said they want to talk. Tevin Campbell made a song once, "Can we talk?" At least for a minute. I'd like to know your name. I ask you all to please support the motion. Tevin Campbell said it better, more melody. Can we talk? That's all they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Caban would like to speak, and you've already had one shot. Are you cool? Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Cummings is in the queue, and we'd like to give her a chance, if you can be brief.
I'll be brief.
We need to wrap this up.
That was amazing. That was absolutely amazing. Commissioner Proctor, you actually worked in a petition to be chair into this issue. That was, that was nothing short of amazing, I'm telling you.
And I know I've got two more years to go.
No, that was pretty dope. I ain't gonna hold you. That's pretty dope. The petition that Commissioner Proctor made was for our citizens to be able to have a conversation with the state about these issues. There's only one problem. In a workshop, the citizens don't speak. So how is there dialogue between our citizens and the state agencies during the workshop where citizens don't get to speak? In a workshop, it's us getting information from our staff and from whoever else we invite.
Let's do a town hall.
I'm not done, Commissioner Proctor. And I sat here and I listened to you make all the comments you wanted to make. It's my turn. So what I was wondering was, is there a better way for us to get to where we're trying to get to besides us having a workshop where we're actually doing all the talking, and they're doing none? The best thing we did to actually make that happen is when we had staff sit down with our partner agencies to look at our plan, and with our stakeholders, and they were all in the same room and able to have a conversation about how we might improve the plan. Now, if what was asked today was for us to have staff sit down with the state shareholders, and our local shareholders, and have a conversation around how the plan is going, so that they can ask their questions, our staff can present the information, and the state can answer whatever questions they may have, that would get us where we're trying to go. But a workshop is not going to get us there. So if that's what we're asking for, then that's what we need to be asking for. But a workshop is one where we come here, we sit, and we hear information, and we ask information. And then, at the end of it, we make a decision that will be confirmed at another board meeting. I think what you guys are asking for, Mr. Epstein and Neighborhood, is for what we did before. That thing that gets you closer to where you're trying to go in the workshop, unless you don't want to ask the questions of the stakeholders that you asked to come here, which was, and that's what Commissioner Proctor said, is give them the opportunity to talk to the stakeholders and ask the questions of the stakeholders about what the plan, or how our plan is actually going, so we're all in the same room. And so I just, again, I, I appreciate, I'm sorry, I'm almost done, ma'am chair. I, my immediate pass. I appreciate where we're going with this. And if you want the workshop, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with the workshop. It's just that, again, I want to understand exactly what you all are asking for. It does, to me, it does not sound like, if you want to have the conversation that you're asking for a workshop, it sounds like to me, you're asking for the meeting that we had before, where you can get all, everybody in the room to talk about the plan, and maybe have staff come back with a status report of how that meeting went. And then, if we want to have a workshop after we get that status report, we can most definitely have a workshop after we get that status report. But if we have a workshop, y'all won't, y'all won't be able to say nothing. You'd be able to send us emails and give us comments, but you won't be able to speak during that workshop. So just the understanding of what we're trying to accomplish here, and the opportunity we're trying to give these folks. I, I, I am not hard pressed either side of the other. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think, I believe what staff is telling me. I believe that we're doing it the right way. And I believe that staff, that the state, what staff has said, the state has replied to us. But if we need a workshop, or if we need to have that meeting for all of us to get on the same page, I, I don't, I don't mind giving you all that. But as County Administrator said, it's my last comment, as he said, every time we come here, there's an additional ask. There's additional ask on, can we do this? Can we do that? At some point, it is, this is the plan, it's what we're going to move forward, we're going to give it some time to work, and then we're going, we're going to move forward in that way. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm done speaking for today, but I wanted to figure out what we're trying to get these folks.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you want a second bite of it. Commissioner Cummings still needs her first bite of it, and so does Commissioner Caban. We know you had some time. So Commissioner Cummings, please, take as much time as you need.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've sat, and I apologize, first of all. I'm a little nauseous.
Uh-oh.
I'm not pregnant, but just experiencing some nausea. So I apologize. But I've sat and listened to the commissioners and the public. And first of all, I want to thank staff for this very thorough analysis and summary report of what has gone on for the last year with the drawdown. But I also want to thank members of the Lake Monson community, Mr. Gibby, Ms. Rivers, Ms. Epstein, Ms. Davis. You guys have been here time and time again, speaking to us about Lake Monson. And I know it's because you have a vested interest. You live out there, and you have a vested interest in the quality of the water and the surroundings of Lake Monson. I've heard my fellow commissioners debate about meeting, or workshop, or what have you. And I don't want us to get hung up on labels as far as addressing concerns of citizens. But I just recall, Mr. Chair, that this time last year, maybe a year ago, this same group came and asked for a meeting. And I don't know if they labeled it workshop or meeting. And I voted for us to have a meeting, but of course, it didn't pass. But one of the things we agreed, we relied upon, is the Lake Monson Action Plan. And what we said is, let's wait. Let's wait, and do the drawdown, and see what happens, see if we have some positive results after the, after the drawdown. And so the year has passed. We do have the results. In my opinion, they are positive, positive results. It shows that phosphorus levels are down, the sediment has been positively affected because of the drawdown and the dryness of the soil that has positively affected the sediment. We've looked at results from water quality. Water quality is improving. We also, in the reported indication, there has been a positive mitigation of that invasive vegetation, and that has given way to positive, what do we call it, our own native vegetation coming, coming forth in the lake. My point is, a year ago, we didn't have these positive findings. But here, as we sit here, we've got results from, from that drawdown. Now, I think part of the ask is not just for staff to meet with, and I'm not going to say workshop, but to meet with the citizens, but also for the other stakeholders, so to speak, our state agencies, DEP, and FW, FWC. And I've been on this board a couple of years, and I don't recall us having a meeting with those state entities, as well as with county staff, or what have you, as it relates to the condition of Lake Monson. Anna, may I ask, Anna, have we ever had such a meeting with DEP and FWC? Because I think we recognize this is what a state water body?
Staff have met with those entities, but the commission has not.
What? No, I'm sorry.
Staff have met with DEP and FWC, but I don't.
But not with the citizens of Lake Monson?
The citizens were involved. The citizens were involved.
Oh, there was a meeting involving the citizens?
That is correct. There was a meeting with the state agencies.
Oh, okay, back in 2022. Okay. But not since we've had this Lake Monson Action Plan. Correct.
That's correct. The meeting was when we were developing the action plan, but we have not had a meeting that included the state agencies, county staff, and the citizens.
Right, right. Okay, thank you so much. I just recall very vividly that we told the citizens that we had an action plan, we wanted to do the drawdown, we wanted to wait to get some results from that drawdown before we would have, before we would have a meeting, so we would have some positive information to provide. Now, it doesn't matter to me whether or not, if we had, in that meeting, whether there's going to be questions about dredging or non-dredging. I think that's something that can be, can be discussed. I think we've got scientific information that shows that the drawdown was effective. As I've heard from staff and a county administrator, it's going to take time. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. The water quality is not going to be 100% in one year or two years. It might take multiple years. But having said that, I do not have a problem with having a meeting with the citizens, with FWC, with DEP, with our staff, and whomever, to discuss the status of where we are now. And if the issue of dredging comes up, I think we've got documentation, even in this report, about what our scientists believe is the danger of dredging, dredging or not. But just based on that, and having told the citizens a year ago, wait until we get the report, and then perhaps we can meet, I'll support Commissioner Proctor's motion that we meet. If we're going to be restricted in the meeting, let's not call it a workshop. Call it a meeting, or whatever we want to call it. I don't have a problem hearing input from the citizens. I don't have a problem with the county presenting its own scientific information documentation. I don't have a problem with us showing the positive progress that we have made from, from the drawdown. So having said that, and I know we've been going over this a while, but I'll support Commissioner Proctor's motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam, or Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue.
Yep. It'll be quick.
What's that?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think there would, would somebody like to make a substitute motion?
No, I'm in queue, and I'd like to.
Okay, Commissioner O'Keefe, go for it.
Thank you. I'd like to request a friendly amendment from Commissioner Proctor to have a representative from friends of Lake Monson participate in the workshop you're requesting.
Point of inquiry before accepting, Mr. Chairman, if I might ask the chairman. Chairman, with the flexibility of a town hall meeting, not, would allow for exactly the motion, and thus, the equal engagement of all parties summons to the town hall, as opposed to a strict workshop that places us in a straitjacket, and we have rules defined, which mitigates against their voices being amplified. So if I could amend my own motion to substitute the word workshop, thank you. And utilize the word instead, what did I just say? Town Hall meeting. That's the one I want to use, town hall. And so, does that help you, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Who's the secondor of the motion?
Is that okay?
I'm the second. It, it seems to confuse the issue for me. So I'll leave it at that for this good time.
I can receive that.
Okay, so we're all over the place, guys. Commissioner Proctor's got a motion on the table, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. We have gone around and round.
But, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to just say that I, my motion, may I change it to?
You can, you can amend your motion however you want, if your secondor agrees with it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Proctor, I'll second that if, if you, if you take it from a town hall back to the original meeting, because you brought up a great point. They have not met with DEP and everybody in our county stakeholders in the same room and had a conversation since that 2022 put together of the plan. If we could have that meeting with those folks, I'll second it.
I'll second your motion.
Clarification, Mr. Chair.
Okay, listen, we got to, we got to, like, create a clean motion here. We all over the place. We're talking about communication. We're simply, and I have not weighed in, so please, give me a moment. We're talking about communication, okay? Staff is willing to communicate with all the stakeholders and the state, FWC, and all those people. They can bring all those people together without our involvement. They are willing to do that. So whether we call it a charrette, or a, or a town hall, or a workshop, or whatever, it's really about just communicating, listening, and hearing. And I think, I feel a lot of us are talking, but nobody's listening. So can we just, like, come up with a, a clean motion that everybody agrees on, that's not complicated, stop talking in circles, and land the plan? So we've got a motion from Commissioner Proctor. Your motion was option one with a workshop.
Option one with a colorful workshop, but I don't want to get stuck on that word. So I'm open to charrette, whatever the word is, but that which allows for the... but that which allows for the amplified voice of the community.
Okay, we have a second for that. Commissioner O'Keefe has seconded it. We are on this motion. Commissioner Caban. Would you like to make a substitute?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a substitute motion to host a town hall at the Woodville Community Center specifically to educate our constituents and neighbors on the most recent status report on Lake Munson and also have an opportunity for our neighbors to submit speaker cards and to provide feedback similarly to how we did the town hall, Commissioner Proctor, previously.
That will include stakeholders?
Yes, we can invite them all to come. Everyone has their opportunity to submit input, and we can take speaker cards, and it gives an open dialogue. Commissioner Proctor, we had great success with this in our last town hall.
I'll second the substitute motion. We're on the substitute motion. I think I seconded it.
What's the first one?
It's just clarity at this point. We're just seeking clarity.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the distinction between. It's no different.
He's calling for an actual meeting at the Woodville Community Center, inviting stakeholders, allowing people to submit speaker cards. He's doing the same thing Commissioner Proctor did with a lot more specificity. That's it. I think it's something we all agree with. I think we agree. Yes, sir.
I disagree, Mr. Chairman. What my motion, the effort of my motion was not unlike what we did in Woodville as informational system. We talked about zoning. We talked about sewer pipes coming. We talked about expansion, growth, and we had the information. This is a group of people who desire to say something to us, with us. I'm looking for a circle and not a head table.
Mr. Caban.
That's what they want to do.
That's included in the motion. So remember, in our.
Speaker cards.
In our town hall, we listened to them. We got feedback about Oak Ridge Road on lights, and we implemented that in the next meeting. So what I'm saying is they have an opportunity to speak. They have an opportunity to engage. And commissioners can come if they'd like, sit at the table and engage with them.
And I hear what you're saying. What I'm saying is, let's take some of the, a town hall takes some of the officialness out of us being the big eyes and they being the little u's. We're looking for common ground. We all, not up here, but we all on the same floor.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
But in terms of the speaker's card and all of that, they still get three minutes. They're blocked. That's not the conversation that they're asking for. I mean, but they're here. That's not the conversation I thought that I heard. So if they had four people sitting up at the table, and DEP had their three people at the table, and we had our table, and people going around and around. That's great conversation. That's what I'm had in mind, sort of. But filling out the speaker cards, well, look, I'm not going to get paid, I won't be getting paid any less, whatever way the vote goes. My hope was simply that they would have maximum voice to feel and to be a part of, in exchange. Filling out a speaker's card is not, in my opinion, an exchange. Wish I could have had one for my daughter growing up.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, guys, I think we're going to just go for a vote. Vote it up and down. I think it's a, we got a substitute motion. It's got a second from Commissioner Minor. All those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
So, okay, so substitute motion fails. We are back on the original motion. Commissioner, do I need to tell them who was in opposition? Okay, Commissioner Maddox, Cummings, O'Keefe, and Proctor in opposition to Commissioner Caban's substitute motion. We are on the original motion, which we need to vote on. So Commissioner Proctor, you want to restate your motion?
Option one, add it with a town hall slash community meeting. Trying to capture what you were saying. So give it some latitude.
Can I? Mr. Maddox?
An amalgamated approach to what Christian was saying myself. Let everybody in the house talk.
Can I put some shape around it, Commissioner Proctor?
Option one, town hall meeting involving a staff-led town hall meeting that involves the stakeholders with a representative from our stakeholder group here, with the state agencies involved, where there can be an open conversation, open conversation about the progress of the plan, okay? Questions being asked by our stakeholders, answers being given, and the public being able to respond and to participate via a speaker's card or something like that. I think the idea here is to have a stakeholder from this group sit at the table, be able to ask questions. We have our staff there. We have the agencies there. Everything is covered. That way, and that's a town hall, and if commissioners want to show up, so be it. But this is staff presenting the plan, stakeholder representative, stakeholders from the state, publicly noticed, we're able to come.
Excellent. Mr. Epstein, that's a thumbs up. All right, perfect. Excellent.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Commissioners, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed? Nay. Passes six to one. Mr. Administrator, did you have a direction on location? Location can be up to staff.
I can determine that.
Is there a location community that the community is open? Is that church? That's on the cone of Crawfordville and Calvert Circle.
Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioners, we're on item number 17, full board appointments. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 17 seeks full board consideration of appointments to citizens to the Architectural Review Board, the Board of Adjustment Appeals, Career Source Board, as well as the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group and the Planning Commission. The item recommends options one through five. For four related to the appointment of the Joint Bicycling Work Group, the board will have to waive Mr. Amadon's conflict employment relationship by two-thirds vote. So option one would be to appoint an eligible citizen, one eligible citizen, Pierce Withers, to the Architectural Review Board for a term of three years. Option two would be to appoint two eligible citizens to the Board of Adjustment Appeals for three-year terms. The board needs to, James Pfeiffer is seeking an appointment as the member seat, and Charles Friedrich is also seeking appointment for the alternate seat. Option three is the appointment of two citizens to Career Source Board. Option four, again, is the citizen Alan Patrick Amadon to the Joint Bicycle Group, and that would require the waiver. And option five would be to appoint an eligible citizen to the Planning Commission, and there are two eligible citizens presented in the materials. Mr. Chairman, we have no speakers on this item.
That was a lot, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner Minor, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, if it's the will of the board, I think I can take this all in one motion, just to expedite things, if that's right with everybody.
Go for it.
All right, for option one, I'd like to nominate Pierce Withers. He's the only eligible applicant, the Architectural Review Board.
You're going to just do them all, and then we'll make one?
Yeah, I'll make one motion, unless someone else would like to do a different approach.
Go ahead.
For option two, I'd like to recommend Mr. James Pfeiffer for the member seat. He served as a county alternate and served a partial term. He's seeking appointment to the member seat. And then also for the county alternate seat, I'd like to recommend Charles Trey Friedrich. For option three, I'd like to nominate those seeking reappointment. That's Martina McDowell. And then the other seat would be Aaron Gillespie. For option four, the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group, I'd like to nominate Alan Patrick Amadon. And as the county administrator mentioned, he has requested a waiver by filling out Form 4A. This is basically a waiver for conflicting employment relationship. So that would require a two-thirds vote. And then finally, for the Planning Commission, I'd like to recommend nominate Rebecca O'Hara, who is seeking reappointment to that seat. That's the motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion and a second from Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Minor's motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously. Commissioners, we are now on citizens to be heard on non-agenda items.
You have one speaker, Max Epstein.
Max Epstein, please say your name and address for the record. Three minutes.
1,001 San Luis Road. Thank you very much, y'all. I'm not going to speak on that item because we have a workshop where we can discuss all of this stuff.
Town hall.
Thank you. Town hall, that's right. Bill, if you want a running partner, I hate running, but I'll take you up on that.
Well, we got to go out there and show them how to do cross-country.
Yeah, right. I did want to take your attention back. I think, Commissioner Maddox, you mentioned about getting more trails and how can we build upon getting, you know, properties, whatever. The state has funds available every year through the Florida Forever Program. I know, Commissioner O'Keefe, we tried to work with you to try to get the rest of Falls Chase. I guess the developer didn't pick up. I would like to see this body as a body take it up for real instead of just, it's on the number one priority for Cola Springs. The money is there. But they also have matching funds available for land acquisition. See, Tallahassee used to get it every single year. They will match whatever funding comes. So I'd like to see this body, every year, if they can, you have some money, go after something. Identify a list of important pieces of land that become parks that could double up as trails or whatever. It's free money. So I just wanted to throw that in there. There's free money available for that program. And thank you very much, because this Munson thing is complicated. And when we come up here, you argue for an hour and a half when we could have just sat at the table and had a discussion about things. And that's what this is about, and the management techniques. What is the plan for restoration? How do we restore it? Do we dredge? Do we not? There's something called phyto remediation, where you plant plants, and the plants do the business. So there's a lot of different ways it can be chopped up, and we need to know going forward. So I'll shut up, let everyone get out of here, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Epstein, it might be the apple snail's fault.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Yes, those kites like the native ones more, but they will eat.
All right, Commissioners, we're on items from the county attorney.
I have nothing for the board, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, just a quick one. Commissioners, as a reminder, the board will have your budget workshop scheduled for next Tuesday morning, June 17th, at 9:00 a.m. The materials for the board workshop will be distributed to the board this evening. We will schedule briefings through your respective offices. As you know, Commissioners, the legislature's extended session this year, and budget committees are still meeting as of late last week. The legislature is expected to return again on Monday to vote on the final budget, but they do have until June 18th to do so. The budget materials that we will present to you will present a balanced budget based on the best available information that we have available to us, and we will stand ready to address any new challenges and fiscal constraints that may come our way. Commissioners, as such, as we do every year, as a precaution, we've held the morning of July 8th at 9:00 a.m. available as a placeholder, again, should the board need any additional budget workshops. And again, we look forward to that day. Commissioners, at the risk of belaboring this, let me just say, we get your direction loud and clear on the Lake Munson item, and just know we respect that. I can't emphasize that enough. Commissioner, please also know that we're trying to execute your plan on that. This is very analogous to when we bring you a road project to be done. And we provide, we meet with neighborhoods for a long, long time, and we coordinate, we decide where the road's going and what the road's going to be made of. And we don't get into the road and construction project and decide that the road's going to go somewhere else or that we're going to use different techniques to build the road. We're trying to keep you on your plan, and it's going to take a long time. We've got absolutely no problem whatsoever in engaging that workshop. We look forward to it. But I do want to add just that little extra emphasis for the board's consideration. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. All right, Commissioners, we're at commissioner discussion items. We're going to start at this end of the diocese tonight since we've had a quiet night down here. Commissioner Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good meeting, everyone. My first note of business was I was going to give Commissioner Proctor and his aide Rachelle a big shout out from the Hurricane Preparedness event they put together Saturday. But instead, I'm just going to give the shout out to Rachelle because after the last agenda item, I'm not giving Proctor any of the kudos. No, but really, that was a great event, Commissioner Proctor. And I believe, how many people came through there? I think we had over 300?
We had 389.
389 cars came through, many with families. I think we served over 500 people. And so I think that's just a great initiative as we get into, you know, the hurricane season. And so I really want to give kudos to you and your aide. I know y'all worked hard putting that together. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to request a proclamation for Angelo and Kim Crowell. They are two local entrepreneurs, a married couple, and they raised $35,000 for a local nonprofit, which is called First T Tallahassee, which is a nonprofit that works with, uses golf to work with kids who may be disabled or just through the development process.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Next, I would like to request a proclamation. You know, I spoke with Florida State University before bringing this proclamation up, and I'm really excited about this. But I would like to request a proclamation for the Florida State University Police Officer Cody Popple, who engaged and took down the shooter during the Florida State shooting.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
And next, I would, some quick back history, Commissioners. Williams Landing is a road out in Fort Braden from Highway 20 that connects with Williams Landing. And Williams Landing Road, there are a handful, if not more than, I think, 30 residents on that road that have been trying very hard to get speed bumps implemented on that landing road because of folks speeding down that landing. And I believe there's a policy in our county policy that states we need two-thirds or 75%. Can we get some clarification from that?
You said Williams Road?
Williams Landing Road.
Is that the road where the guy drove off into the water about a few years ago?
Commissioner, you'll recall, we did all of the safety improvements, and I'm not sure if that's the landing or not, but there were landings. But I think Brent can answer the specific question about the petition threshold.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. It is 75% of the property owners along that road.
Okay, thank you. So right now, Commissioners, there's a group of our neighbors out there are really trying to spearhead.
A point of information.
Commissioner Proctor, can you let Commissioner Caban finish?
No, 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 no. Staff has just given us a number, which I don't believe is accurate. That 75%, where is that in policy? I thought it was a lower number.
You may be thinking of the two-thirds program, which is the road resurfacing type program, which is 66%. This is for traffic calming.
For traffic altering?
This is traffic calming, traffic calming policy.
Slowing them down.
And that's in policy. That's a policy that we have.
Yes, sir, it is a policy the county has.
So there is a group of our constituents and neighbors out there who are really trying to spearhead in getting signatures to petition to have speed bumps implemented on the road. I think they've got a significant amount. I believe it's over 35, 40. And the fear is there's young children that live on that road. And, you know, I've gone to visit them. You know, I know our office has helped by making phone calls and knocking on doors with neighbors to help get petitions. The issue is, a lot of those folks who have not signed have either no registered number, they're vacant lots, or they don't live, they don't live in state or in Leon County. And so they're having a hard time really getting the petitions just because they're not, there's no way to contact the folks that live on that road. And so I'm not asking for really any board direction now, but I am going to ask, by the way of a motion, to have a status report come back at our next meeting, particularly for this Williams Landing Road speed bump issue.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Just a real quick question. I support this. I think this is important. And hopefully, the item that comes back could explain to us what is or isn't in policy when this issue comes up, because I imagine it happens a lot. it happens a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Oh, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, I just want to give a big kudos to staff, and also a big thank you to our colleagues up here, Commissioners. I didn't want to pull it just for the sake of brevity, but item number 13 today contained funding on behalf of our county, $210,000, that we will leverage with the Florida Department of Transportation to implement a traffic light and a turning lane at Natural Bridge Road in Woodville. And this is very, very important to our neighbors in Woodville. This is, is right in front of a school, and so it aligns with our shared vision of increasing pedestrian safety, especially in front of schools. And I want to give a big, quick shout out to staff, because I know that they've been working in close coordination with the Florida Department of Transportation. And I think that, Mr. County Administrator, we got this, we got this expedited with FDOT to be done by, potentially by fiscal year '28, just because it is in close proximity to a K-8 school, so.
Yes, and they, and they combined it with a, with an existing project.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So thank you, staff, and thank you, Commissioners, and I hope you guys have a great rest of your month.
Well, see you in a week.
Yeah. See you in a week.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great meeting, Mr. Chair, you had a good issue there. You did great with it.
Thank you.
Bringing this in for a landing. Commissioner Command, congratulations on that traffic light. You did some work there, and I appreciate what you're doing. First, I want to ask for a proclamation recognizing Sue Dick on her use of service, 30 years total, 25 years after him, to the Chamber of Commerce here in Tallahassee to be presented, if you can work it out, Mr. Chair, by yourself, at the Chamber Retreat. That'd be my motion.
The Chamber Conference?
Chamber Conference.
You got it. Yes, sir. You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
All right, next, in recognition of the great K-12 year we've had this year, I'd like to request the following proclamations. Number one, 2025 Florida Tax Watch Principal Leadership Award being presented to Carmen Connor and Dr. Benny Bowden Jr. I'd like to have a proclamation presented to each of them for their successes there.
All right, all those in, we got a motion and a second. Motion, Commissioner Maddox, second. Who made the motion? You made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Second, Commissioner Command, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
The 2025 Florida Department of Education Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership was presented to Marcus Stokes of John G. Riley Elementary School. I'd like to present him a proclamation for that achievement.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Dr. Adrian Peters, founder of the Achieve Academy, has had her first graduating class. Achieve Academy is a multi-age, multi-grade, skill-based academy for students with learning challenges. The diagnosis of her students, autism spectrum disorder, attention deficit disorder, hyperactivity disorder, dyslexia, communication, speech, and language disorder, and language disabilities. Again, she's had her first graduating class, and impressively, as I believe it, all of them, all four of them, are going to TSC or some secondary education facility, so I'm proud of her for doing that. So I'd like to make that resolution.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Last but not least, Oxford Learning Academy, started by Ashley Scott, is celebrating their five-year anniversary. I'd like to make a, a motion for a proclamation recognizing her and her five years with Oxford Learning Academy.
We've got a motion. I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Finally, Mr. Chair, I want to, I want to, again, thank everybody for the conversation over Lake Munson. It's been something that every time it comes up, we have a long talk about it. The Commissioners' willingness up here to hear our citizens out says a lot about who we are. Commissioner Command, your efforts to even get across the line, to get to a place where we can give the people of your district what they desire, with your motion, was, was one that I applaud. So kudos to you, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you for your heart of starting it off. And Mr. Chair, again, the way you led us through that, even though it got messy, you brought us in for a good landing. A job well done. Staff, thank you for all the work that you've done on Lake Munson, and the effort that you put in, the focus that you put in it, and, and your dealing with the conversations that we're having up here, and being patient with us as we try to get our, our, our citizens' questions answered, and their voices heard by all stakeholders. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Madam previous chair, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to request a proclamation for a conference that's on June 21st, and it's going to be focusing on women's health, and it's designed to provide women and girls with real tools, resources, and community support to take charge of their health and their overall well-being. And for it to be presented, Mr. Chair, at that conference on June 21st.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings, could you repeat that for me real quick?
Yes. I'd like to request a proclamation for a conference, June 21st, that will be focusing on women's health, and it's designed to provide women and girls with real tools, resources, and community support to take charge of their health and overall well-being. And the name of the group is the Yellow Uterus, U-T-E-R-U-S.
I'll make a second on that, and just one clarification. I said Marcus Stokes, it was Maurice Stokes.
Maurice Stokes, yeah.
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Cummings, we've got a motion and a second for a proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. If I could just ask one little point of privilege, we're getting high on our proclamation limits here, so it would help if we could present those, like Sue Dick's, at the Chamber Retreat or at the conference. If we can present them outside of chambers, because I think we're limited to five per meeting, and we are, we're humming up on that, so, for like the next year. So if you guys are able to present them elsewhere, that would be ideal. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to, again, as usual, thank our incredible staff, and our incredible county administrator, and county attorney, and all the, all the Commissioners up here, just for our concern for our citizens, and the discussion and the debate, which I think demonstrates that we have a high level of concern for all the citizens in Leon County. And finally, I'd like to wish all the fathers happy, happy Father's Day, and a great Father's Day weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner O'Keefe.
I would like to extend a happy, soon-to-be Father's Day to Commissioner Command.
Outstanding.
To that. I am, now, this, if we have fun in another place, we will, this proclamation, but their event is out of town, and July is Disability Pride Month. So I'm requesting a proclamation to recognize July's Disability Pride Month to be received by the Family Cafe organization.
All right, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And you need that one in July, correct?
Yes. Yep. And then I just want to also thank staff for the work they've done for pedestrian safety. It was part of one of our consent agenda items, item 13, that I didn't need to pull just to, you know, identify this, but we, a while ago, I requested, and we approved to request a study for the safety on Highway 27 from Capital Circle intersection going out five miles. And what has happened is, we made the request, the state Department of Transportation said, you know, thank you, we have a lot on the list, we're very busy. And since then, on their own, staff has gone out and collected their own data and their own inputs, then sent that to the state, which would allow them to be more willing and ready to provide analysis, which I believe should be coming back soon. So thank you, staff, for doing more than we even asked for to keep that going, based on how much this board values that safety. And second, it was mentioned, and Mr. Epstein's already gone, but we, in, in, he mentioned Trust for Public Land and Florida First Money. I do want to, since it was brought up, thank staff for getting with me and explaining that process to me last year, when I went and met with the Trust for Public Land to see about getting Falls Chase property in that, in that state program, because it is the number one request. Unfortunately, when the Trust for Public Land reached out to the owner, they didn't get back to them, and that's sort of the key in the process, is they have to be willing to sell it. So I appreciate the advocacy on that, and just want to let anyone asking about it know that we have asked, and we will continue to ask to get that land in, because the state wants it, we want it, the citizen wants it, but the owner isn't interested yet. So with that, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to, I didn't want to interrupt our consent agenda and start moving, and keep moving things along, but we approved Leon County to apply for the Safe Streets for All application for North Monroe. If you all remember, last year, the CRTPA applied for that, and US DOT staff basically did the thumbs up. They approved it, recommended it for funding, but it didn't actually get all the way to the end of the process. However, DOT staff recommended that we reapply. So we're reapplying for that. I want to thank my fellow Commissioners for the continued support on this, on this effort, as well as, I want to thank Charles Wu and his team for, for working on the application, as well as for their collaboration with CRTPA, Blueprint, and RSNH. So thanks very much to all your work you're doing. Item number two, I think you, you must have seen this in the paper the other day, Barnacle Bills has been demolished. And so I think that's a bittersweet event for a lot of us. I know a lot of people spent a lot of time there in karaoke and other, other activities there. Just want to tell everybody that we're sad to see it go, but I did promise my constituents that we'd have a party once that, once it had turned into an eyesore, once it had been demolished. So we'll figure out something. The, all evidence shows that there'll be a coffee shop opening in that location, so.
What you serving?
What's that?
What you serving?
Oh, we'll, we'll figure it out.
At the party.
Got to do some planning on it.
Coffee.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not confirmed yet, but it looks like there'll be a coffee shop there, which is, which is new construction, so very happy to see that. And then also, I want to wish everybody a happy Father's Day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I feel like you set me up, because everybody in here now wants to go home and go build a product. So I think you better make this fast, because a lot of eyes looking like, don't say a lot. Commissioner Command, I want to thank you, your, your ally, for y'all's role in co-hosting this event with Sheriff Walt McNeil in our offices on Saturday. We did 389 cars, and we gave out more than 500 boxes of food for non-perishables in preparation for our hurricane season. I want to give a special shout out to Global Empowerment Mission from Miami, which prepared the boxes for that event, and Kathleen Carteron, and Kathy Chicken Scratch, Chicken Scratch from GEM. The Emancipation Day celebration at the Hill Family Foundation was, was very, very good, like Nitra Bennett hosted. Some of y'all missed it, but it was, it was, it was hot, it was preview. If you anticipate going, need to get acclimated to, then you'll enjoy that heated day if you're going to Hades, because it would, it would help prepare you for that eventual end. I did mention at the last meeting, I was going to double sure, was there anything else more I needed to do, Mr. Administrator, in our call for a 5% raise for county employees? Was, do I need to say something more?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just that it'll be included for your consideration at the workshop in Tuesday.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't want it to fall off the wagon.
It's included in your materials.
Between now and the workshop. Good, good, good. Commissioner Command, I'm appreciative that, for the world of 500 runners and 10,000 people coming into Tallahassee. I think Kerry Post indicated to, to us that the downtown hotel areas will be the ground zero for all of the activities. So it's not like they've got to catch a trolley, a bus, they're all over downtown in, in area hotels. So we're looking forward to, and I appreciate you agreeing to give leadership to that. I'm really excited, guys. I mean, I'm going home with a feeling like a great big victory. I want to thank staff for them working with the state of Florida. As Crawfords Road, y'all is going to finally get some light from Wilson Green all the way back down to Capital Circle. I mean, I mean, I know it's a small step for men, but this is a quantum leap for mankind going down Crawfords Road, and that's probably a part of my speech up here that you'd never hear me talk about no more. So check the block and scratch it off. Then finally, Mr. Administrator, I wanted to ask if, there were two things at the last meeting I want to go back to, that we received calls from senior citizens and some business owners about loitering, and this is a request for a study on the commercial and residential loitering, with some recommended solutions to what we can do about that. And I thought I said that at the last meeting, but I wanted to make sure that we hit it again.
Go ahead.
And we, I was just conferring with the, with the county attorney's office. I didn't know, and we may need clarification. I don't know if you know Ken, off the top of your head, if we got direction to do an agenda item to be brought back? Because if we didn't, you can clarify that now, and we'll, and we'll be sure.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that staff brings back an agenda item, looking at a review of residential, commercial loitering, and with recommendations for solutions.
We have a motion.
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Propose.
Oh, sorry, one in opposition.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, you just always amazing me, I declare. I told your wife you were such a good man the other day.
Can't take it back.
No take backs.
Next time I see you, I got another message for you. I'm going to put it on there, he's a good man, sometime. To establish a citizens' council for each commission district, and I think we had a motion on that the last time. Vince, are you all still? Ken, is that cool?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got that direction. We'll be bringing that back.
Okay, good, good, good. Staff, I don't know what you're going to eat this evening, but Commissioner Minor and I, we're going up to Barnacle Bills, and we're going to have a little shing ding up there. And we heading over there now, hot dogs, stop on Biden. See us there.
See you there.
All right. Staff, I'm sorry, Commissions, you all are the best, and I enjoy working with you all. And on, on commission days, sometimes I, I wake up, I get excited, and then I just fall down on the couch, oh my God, I got to go see them, great day, and see if they give me a sandwich or whatever I can get out of y'all. So very grateful, work with you, Mr. Chairman, do an excellent job, and one of the joys of my life is extended family. I don't like that word, extended. You're an inclusive family, you're not extended. You're very much attached family to my heart. Hello to my mother in District One. I love you, District One, all the citizens of District One, and there is nothing you can do about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioners, in closing, I would just like to thank Chief Abrams and his staff, and Sally Davis, and all the folks at EMS for the Press the Chest event, which I had the opportunity to speak at a few weekends ago. Incredible attendance, you know, another example of how, you know, really impactful our, our organization is. Even took my little, my little CPR blow-up dummy and hid it in one of my kids' beds that night, just to freak them out a little bit. And on that note, I have to celebrate my, my oldest daughter's birthday was yesterday. Chloe turned 19, and in like eight days, my middle kid turned 17. So it happens fast, and, you know, my two girls are so close together in age, two years exactly, so it's like I have a 19 and a 17, and I have a 20 and an 18. It just happens so fast. So happy birthday, honey. I will, it looks like I might make it to your dinner.
Mr. Chairman, is your shotgun working? Ch-ch.[1782.61]
Oh, well, we're past those days, Commissioner Proctor. We're past those days. She's 19 now. She's gone, and she's a grown up, doing her thing. All right, Commissioners, thank you so much, and with that, we adjourn.
Hit it!